I'd like to bring to order the February 9th meeting of the Town Council. Thank you all for weathering the storm. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our home.
Mrs. Mallow.
Counselor Sousa.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Here.
Counselor Mallow.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier is coming.
Coming.
He must be a little late.
At this point, I was supposed to introduce the oath of office to firefighter Gordon Simad. He would be coming two weeks from now with his family. I didn't feel it was fair to have them all weather the storm in the middle of this. So he stayed home. Before I start, I'd like to thank all the departments that were involved in the blizzard two weeks ago. I had firsthand view of what was going on. I was down at the fire station for most of the day, on and off. I'd like to thank the fire department, especially Chief Lloyd, who spent over 48 hours with us. He was in the command central and he did an outstanding job. I'd also like to thank Captain Reimers, who never left the chief's side and was also there constantly with us. He added unity to the whole situation. I'd like to thank Chief Blakey, who's not here right now. He was my personal chauffeur who drove me around during the blizzard so I could get to the fire department. He was calm. He helped us. I'd like to thank the DPW, who worked endless hours and they never stopped. They took small breaks and they did a very good job. I'd like to thank Tanya, the head of the shelter, who opened the shelter at moment's notice and got all the volunteers there. There was never complaint. They were enthusiastic. We did shelter maybe a dozen people, Chief?
Yes.
And we did serve a very valuable service to the elderly who were afraid to be home and lose their electricity. And also the maintenance man, Phil Manny. One of them actually drove a plow, because we were down, a plow driver. And he took care of the town hall and was able to get us open. Excuse me, Wednesday. Being there, I saw how this town can come together. I was very proud of it. I was proud of all of you who stayed, who worked three shifts in a row and never complained. I want to thank you on behalf of the council and myself. Consent agenda. Approval of executive session minutes November 24th, 2014. Approval of regular council meeting minutes December 22nd, 2014. Approval of executive session minutes of December 22nd, 2014. Approval of regular council meeting minutes January 12th, 2015. Approval of executive session minutes January 12th, 2015. Approval of joint workshop with the school committee budget committee minutes January 14th, 2015. January 26th, 2015. Meeting canceled due to blizzard. January 27th, 2015. Council workshop canceled due to blizzard. Approval of special council meeting minutes December 11th, 2014. Receipt of minutes for the following boards and commissions. Tiburon Prevention Coalition, Library Trustee, Budget Committee, Historic Preservation Advisory Board, Recycling Landfill Committee, four minutes. Street Advisory Committee, Planning Board, four minutes. Correspondence received and filed. South Kingston acknowledged Tiburon Town Council Resolution Regarding Rhode Island MAP, RI. Newport County Chamber, meeting minutes and agenda items for 2015. Peter Monas requests council address disposition of Essex Library referred to Town Administrator and Solicitor. Peter Monas, recommendation regarding tax stabilization program. Town of Foster Resolution requesting postponement of Rhode Island MAP, RI. Tiburon Prevention Coalition news. Obviously, we canceled meetings. Approval of tax.
You forgot the Town of Foster. We're going to have to eat. Town of Foster, number eight.
Town of Foster Resolution requesting postponement. I think I said that. Approval of tax, assessed payments, treasurer, treasurer, finish, so that distribution of budget and revenue reports December 2014. Quarterly budget report summary for December 31st, 2014. Submitted to Division Municipal Finance and Auditor General. Town Administrator Distribution of Building Improvements Needless. DPW Director Steven Belucci, update status on Main Road, State Road, Town Line Sign, memorandum from DPW Director Steven Belucci. DPW Director, monetarium in response to Counselor Perry regarding update on William Button Estates. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
No problem.
Go ahead.
CA 6, 7, and 8. Just for quick little comments.
These are out of order, right? So we're going to go to the other.
What we did was, we had to put it all together. Yeah.
All right. Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to remove CA 1B and CA 1D.
D and D, is that what it's called?
D and D.
D and D.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that right, Mr. President?
I thought you were going to do Shabbat first.
I just did.
I'd just like to pull that one. I think it needs further discussion sometime down the road. I'd just like to put it back on for another meeting.
As an agenda item?
As an agenda item.
Okay.
CA 7, and then Mr. Belucci is not here.
He's on vacation.
He's on vacation. I believe that the school department did take that on as a project.
Okay.
So I just wanted to let everyone know that that is being done and the work is in progress. And CA 8 is another one from Mr. Belucci. I'll wait until he comes back and put that on the next agenda item.
As an agenda item, okay.
And that'll be it. Thank you.
Why don't we just go all the way through it and then we'll approve all of them, if that's all right?
Yep.
CA 1B.
CA 1B, I just have a minor on the page three of D 2, where we have Natalie M. Cody, Regalane Conservation Commission. There was a motion, but it doesn't identify that the motion passed unanimously. If you could just add that comment. And then for CA 1D on page 10, the second sentence, or the second item from the top, again, it was motion by Counselor Lambert, seconded by myself, and then it should say motion passed unanimously. That's it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to pass? CA 1B, CA 1D, C...
Yep.
Right, well, I mean, C 6, both CA 1B and CA D as amended.
I move that we approve CA 1B and CA 1D as amended.
Second. Motion to be made in second, all those in favor.
And I move we approve CA 7, 6, 7, and 8, I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion to be made in second, all those in favor. Before we go further, I'd just like to say, obviously, we all called each other. We're wearing the same color, except for...
Yeah, I didn't.
They've been pretty giving you a hint. And it was, it was three weeks ago, was to support the high schools project, purple. Mrs. Pelletier made this beautiful banner, also provided all the ribbons. Joe's wearing some of them. They were on the door of the town council.
The lights on the bridge were also purple for a day or two. I don't remember.
And our giant, and obviously, we're all purple.
This is trouble.
All right. Public hearings and presentations, public presentation of the audit has been moved and will be on the next agenda. Advertised public hearings. It was suggested that we continue this to the next agenda, also because of the weather. Some of the public who was wishing to attend could not make it. So what I think I have to do is open it and then continue it. Alcoholic beverages, Town Code of Ornaments, Chapter 6, proposed amendment to authorize and regulate a new BYOB license to serve alcohol brought in by patrons, also known as BYOB. 2A is proposed amendments, 2B is additional proposed amendments. I'd like to open to the public. All those present would like to speak?
May I? Just, and we're not going to deal with it, but I just want to call our attention. You've got two drafts. You've got the original draft, which was submitted about four weeks ago, and then you've got an amended version of that, which was submitted two weeks ago. Because it was brought to our attention that you do have, you do have a second aspect. Originally, we intended it just to apply to restaurants, places with Victorian license. But you've got places, you've got events where they're not having a Victorian license. They don't sell food, but they're allowing people to bring food and drink in together. So we added that second part there. We'd like to see a license and the public safety thing, that there's some sort of control, trying not to make it too onerous, but that's been added to it as well. So when we come back to it in two weeks, something to think about if you think that's not enough or too much. Obviously, that's, bring it up. Let me know.
Okay. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Would anyone from the public like to speak? Anyone from the public like to speak? At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue this until our next meeting, which would be the 23rd. Is that correct?
Yes.
I move that we continue the public hearing on alcoholic beverages to our next regularly scheduled meeting, February 23rd.
Second. Motion to be made in second, all those in favor. Number three, taxation, Town Code of Ornaments, Chapter 74, proposed amendment to Section 74 of 48, which regulates the amount of exemption for elderly, low-income taxpayers based on annual income. Correspondence, three of those received from Cheryl and Edward Saber, Peter Monas, and Counselor Shabbat. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Anyone from the public like to speak? One more time, I need...
I think the board should, why don't you come to the mic?
Why don't you come to the mic?
17. Peter Monas, Captain, 83 Captain, so. I think the board should present the proposal that was brought by the town. First, and then we can discuss that later on. And then, any other input?
We were going to continue on until this. Yeah, I'm continuing this until... Thank you, Chris. I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to the February 23rd meeting.
Well, second, I just had some questions.
You make the motion, second.
Well...
Go ahead, John.
I just, I'd say I really haven't had a lot of time to go through this, but I just, I'd like to see, if I'm not seeing more data to show what, you know, average people are going to be hit as far as an increase. I mean, people just above the poverty level, you know, are going to be hit. I don't know. I see fixed income people in town that also that have tenants, and I'm not sure they... So, I mean, it's ripe for fraud, so I'd like to know what type of security we have to ensure that we're giving exemptions to people that really deserve it.
Just, there's a spreadsheet at the back that's got a lot of kind of stuff, but the furthest to the right, the column, furthest to the right in the dark, little double bold, he runs some exercises on what the current scheme does to the taxes of a, he's using a $250,000 house, that's a sort of a median. Under the current scheme, it's $2.66, and the bottom, it's $4.40. But I think he can probably explain it a heck of a lot more detail on how he's gotten through that.
My only point is, I'm not sure where his, where he's getting the data to understand where every person, every household's income is. I mean, I know there's some in the census, but that's not always accurate, and some people don't fill it out. So I just wonder where he's getting the data to show, so we can make the comparison.
I think probably, based on historic performance and probably as well census data. I mean, the census data is, you know, we know it's not correct, but it's as good as we can get typically. But like I said, he can...
Well, I'll have time to read it soon.
And Mr. Andy Roberts will explain it at the continued meeting.
Oh, he's right there, actually.
I just saw him looking at me, that's all.
Yeah, because I wasn't expecting this to really be a full hearing tonight. I'm fully prepared to meet in the next meeting. However, Counselor Sousa, Counselor Pelletier is correct. We utilize the data from the census. It's not the most accurate in the world, but it is the best available information that we do have. And as far as the numbers, there is a spreadsheet as far as what the impact would be on an average assessed home.
I haven't, I haven't, I've been doing a lot of work, so.
All right.
I'll get to it this week, then.
I just, one more comment, and I'm going to be a total nerd about this. I did just say that the census isn't particularly reliable, but this data that we have for Tiburon, and I think I mentioned this once before, Tiburon falls into a five-year ACS community this past go-around, so that is not an actual door-to-door census. It's a statistical census, which is a heck of a lot more accurate than most people think it's unconstitutional. That's why they do it in between the census years. It's a statistical assessment of population and income and whatnot, and they do it on a rolling basis. And right now, we, 2013?
13, I think, was the last year.
13, so it's a five-year study, so they have five years' worth of data on a statistical basis, which is a heck of a lot more accurate, I think, than the 2010 census is. Just, if anyone cares.
Yeah, maybe we do take a look at that data.
Good.
Some of that five-year rolling data was not available on some specific issues, but whatever was available, we could take a look at.
Good. Thank you. Motion to be made in second to continue the Town Code of Ornaments, Chapter 74, to the February 23rd, 15 meeting. All those in favor? Thank you. Town Council sitting as a Board of Licensing, advertised public hearing, non-advertised license, John Skrupiak.
Skrupiak.
48 Island View Drive, request approval of private detective license, recommendation of police chief. Chief Blakey, before you walked in, I thanked you for your service during the blizzard and all the police officers and everyone, but you missed it, so thank you on behalf of the council.
Thank you. The men did a good job.
Everybody did, yes.
Regarding this chairman's application for a private detective's license, I would request that the board table it minimally, and there are matters pending in our neighboring community that would affect this license.
So would you like us to continue it to the February 23rd?
At least until it's been resolved in the neighboring community, yes.
We'll put it back on February 23rd and then see if you have enough information or, is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. Entertaining motion to continue this also to the February 23rd?
So moved. It's fine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Dolgen Rhode Island LCC, LLC, I'm sorry, DBA Dollar General, number 15751567, Main Road, request approval of holiday and tobacco license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is Dolgen Rhode Island here?
They're all at the store.
Yes, yes, Madam President. We had been saying that, even if they weren't here due to the weather or anything, that the council must, because there's a problem, we're not going to issue the license.
Right.
And I just heard from the building officials today, so it's not ready to open, I don't believe, anyway.
They're close. Madam President, I just, I just want to say, because we just finished the last inspection there, too, so they've been rushing to get them done, so that's why you have no correspondence. They have met all obligations for the fire codes. Madam President, I don't know if it's official, but I did stop by there, and they said they were opening Thursday, but with the storm, who knows? But that was last, I did stop by to check.
Just so bad, they'll be there all night working on it.
Possibly. We're getting contact numbers and that's how they...
When do they, sorry, when do they anticipate opening?
Thursday?
That's what he just said.
Well, that's what he said.
That's what he just said.
I mean, that's, but when they originally put in for the application, they weren't sure of the date, so.
Chief Blakey just told us?
Well, I was getting contact information for alarms, et cetera, and that's when they, again, that was the official word, that was the workers in the store.
It's a public hearing, I have to open it, right? Is it a public hearing?
No.
Okay. So I...
So I would just suggest, if you're inclined to, to grant it, but have the issuance subject to meeting all legal requirements, so that the clerk can issue it in between meetings if they get everything ready to open.
Do I have a motion?
I will move, I'm sorry, I'm just sort of reading through this.
That's okay.
I move that we approve the holiday license and tobacco license for Dolgen Rhode Island LLC Doing Businesses Dollar General Store, number 15751, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
I have a question, though. When did we get this application? Because it's got a date on it of October, and then it's got a date of January on the same document, so I'm wondering if they held on to it and then...
They came in for information in October, they ran into problems, so they said they're not going to be ready for a while, and then it came back in in January. They also sent me permits for this sign that some people have been questioning, and obviously, they're not here, but they have the very...
These are really the only two licenses they would require, presumably, right?
The only two we would require at this time. But in order to get that, they would have to show they had their certain tax permit from the state, because there's some things from the state that we have to go with.
Yeah, I'd like us to get in the habit of trying to get that stuff in advance of these things, sort of things, but that's all.
Do they have a certificate of occupancy?
I just heard today from the building clerk in the building's office, said she has everything she needs from there, she just hadn't given it to me yet. Because they were still going back and forth with me as the date of opening, but they've obviously kind of zoomed in on it.
Because they've got people in there who are working now, so presumably, they do have a CO.
Yeah, they have to.
But that also would have been, would be a nice thing to know in advance of...
Well, the...
Yeah, because he's sort of...
He's saying that doesn't have it yet, and that says of January 23rd.
Right.
So that's why I asked.
She has it.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else? Motion's been made in second, all those in favor. Appointments and reservations, tree warden, warden, anywhere. Appointment, John Manchester, 2970, Main Road. Mr. Manchester's been doing this job for quite some time.
Madam Chair, I ask you to continue this appointment. I would like the tree warden to return the phone call from members of the Conservation Commission before being considered for this appointment. I think it's a courtesy that needs to be extended, I think there'd be numerous attempts, and I'd like to see it completed to the satisfaction of all involved before this go forward.
Just a question, please.
Yes.
Don't all boards and commissions report to the town administrator?
Yes.
So shouldn't they have to contact the town administrator if they have questions for the tree ward? Isn't that just kind of the way it works? They should be going through you.
Usually, though, I would imagine that they talk to each other also. It just doesn't have to be through...
It's an additional communication loop that isn't really necessary.
And this is an appointment of, it's not really, he's not a board or a one-man board, he's a...
It's a one-man show. The Conservation Commission by the charter does answer to me, so I'm defending the prerogatives of this commission to get an answer to a question. And I'd like to see that be a common courtesy amongst our appointed officials to respond to one another, and I don't want this to continue, so I want the message to go forward.
So we'll continue this until February 23rd and see if there's any progress? Second. I need a first.
Wait. Wait. Why do we need...
Wait, wait, I, I have a motion.
And a second.
To continue, oh, I have a second? All right, discussion then, go ahead.
Why would, give me if he makes the phone call in the next, why, why, why just drag this on? Let's just appoint the man. Just ask the town administrator to contact him and resolve the problem. It's probably just been some bitterness there somewhere. We have to use, we have to use the town administrator as the arbiter sometimes, so it's one phone call, straighten it out, let's not make a big deal out of it. So let's just appoint the man, he's been doing a good job in the town for years. And I'm not going to try to punish him. I'll make a motion to appoint him.
No, 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 no. Okay.
When is this appointment up, first of all?
Actually, the state requires that we appoint every January council meeting, so this was on the last council meeting, and it was held to this, this, it's through DEM that we're required to have.
I understand what Matt's saying, though. If he's not responding to his phone calls, then Matt can talk to him for himself, obviously, but...
I'm just not terribly tired of dysfunctional relationships between adults, and if there's any sort of issue at all, I want the phone call responded to, because once you appoint the person, I can't unappoint them.
You're a human resource person, too, my friend.
Right, and this is how I'm trying to get the message through, the chairman, that I want to answer the phone call.
Nancy, would there be a problem if we waited until February 23rd? As far as you know, I know, you probably don't know that, but...
I can imagine there'd be a problem.
I'm really watching.
We had to postpone the meeting to now.
All right. Well, I have a motion and a second to continue this item, the tree warden appointment until February 23rd.
Excuse me, Madam President, we're not sure either one of us. You made the motion and the second on that, please. We just...
Well, I can't make it, it's always day.
I'll make the motion. I made the motion to continue.
Did you second it?
I'll second it.
Okay.
And the motion was?
To continue.
Continue until 23rd.
Okay, sorry.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Opposed? Need a fourth, houses. Appointments, Roger F. L.
We never see you.
Mieowski.
Mieowski, man.
Request approval to harbor Coastal Water Management Commission, unexpired term to July 15th, 15. Welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself, because the public doesn't have your resume that we have in front of us?
Okay.
Okay. I've been a resident of Tiburon since 1955. I have been in boating since I was 10 years old. I'm now 71, so it's been a while. I served my country in the United States Navy for 43 years before retiring, with unbroken service. I have been an assistant harbor master, mooring master, and I have been on the Tiburon Harbor Commission off and on since the late 1980s. I am a graduate of the State of Rhode Island Harbor Masters Training Course, both basic and advanced. I'm also a graduate of the State of Rhode Island Reserve Police Officers Training Academy, which gave us insight as to what the harbor master was doing in issuing citations and things like that. So I feel I could be a good asset to the town of Tiburon, I feel I have been for many years, and I think I still have a few more good years left in me.
Any questions from the council?
Quick comment, and this is the type of gentleman that Tiburon's lucky to have. We didn't go to Florida.
No. Thank you, sir.
Motion to... Can you announce this?
Mieowski. Whatever's mine.
Coastal Water Management Commission, on expired term, 7/15/15.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made in second, all those in favor. Welcome aboard.
Welcome back, Brian.
Thank you.
Resignation, Gary Vos, resignation effective February 3rd from the Recreation Committee. I'd like to thank Gary, he's been doing this for a long time, and it's a lot of work, and we've all very much appreciated it. He's decided to do this because of his family and his job, but I'd like to thank him for all the years of dedication he's given to Tiburon.
Second, Matt.
Do I have a motion to accept his resignation with regret?
I move that we accept Gary's resignation with regret and thank him for his, well, his probably now decades of service to the youth and...
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Thank you. Unfinished business, Town Clerk, scheduling a possible workshop regarding the streets on March 30th, 2015. One A, DB... I'm sorry, DBW Director Bellucci, report on street committee meetings regarding ownership and service on Cynthia Avenue. Continue, per request of Steve Bellucci.
Madam President, I'm asking that all these streets and the issues that we have, 1A through 1...
They'll be all the way through.
That they all be through 1E. I am getting bombarded in the clerk's office with these street issues, which the street committee used to be handling, and now that some of these people are going to the street committee, and they're saying you're going to be referred to the council, that they don't handle that. I can't handle that through the clerk's office. So what I'm suggesting is we put all these issues on a workshop. You're not going to get to all of them in one night, and I can't possibly notice all these people for one night, because if we did that, we'd be down at the high school for it.
That's what I was just going to say, should we do that?
I know, I'm going to have to break it up, you're going to have to let me break it up as I can see fit and put it... I did mention the 30th of March, because that's our fifth Monday, and we usually hold a workshop, but I am a little concerned with that because of all the workshops you're going to have to have between now and then with your budget and your legal services. So the council will have to direct me, do you want me to go later into April to it? Arrange a couple, because you're going to be doing an awful lot...
This is a later subject, but I'll bring it up now. We have to have a final budget by March 3rd or 4th? 3rd.
I'd like to do it by the 4th.
By the 4th.
By the 4th.
So we're going to need a few more workshops, and that may... Well, no, that's March 30th, though, but we will be having to have to interview all the people that have applied.
Plus you have the workshop on the open meeting and the ethics that you have to plan for, plus you have that zoning workshop, and I think you're starting to load up on this.
And I was going to suggest that we postpone the zoning workshop. There's a question of whether or not the zoning board's even going to come to it, and we have so many priorities right now that I think we should put that off a little bit. We have to get our budget done, and we have to look at those applications.
I think the budget's the most important, right?
Right. So for March 30th, March 30th isn't bad.
Here's my question, do we want to kind of triage some of these? I think we have a distinct difference between Cynthia Avenue and all the rest, because we've made progress on Cynthia Avenue to the extent that we've talked about it a number of times, and the sort of hiccup is, the street committee is having the trouble getting a quorum. So these other streets, it looks like we could at least lean on the streets committee for some assistance and research and their opinion on some of these things, but I'm...
Send them back to us.
Why?
An agenda.
My question is why?
Multiple reasons on different streets, different reasons.
But we don't have that in front of us, what are the reasons for bringing it back to us?
Well, Edmund Street, they said that has to come, that that's a private road, they want the council to determine what services, because she feels that if Cynthia Avenue's getting it, she should get it. Now, we have Grace Street.
But the point of the street committee is to sort this out. Is to do some of this legwork and research and analysis and make recommendations.
We're sort...
I know, I'm not urging you, but I know, I know, but I'm saying...
Is there anyone from the street committee here?
She did call, and I did say that I was looking to have it put on a workshop. I just don't know how you'll handle these without it. Do you think it was a better idea?
If not, if not doing this stuff, what is the street committee doing at the meetings they've been having?
I don't know, sir.
Are they taking on a different, more of a roster?
No, I think they do.
Asking people to haven't been to them, so I don't know, I haven't been to them either, but...
What I understand is they're discussing these streets, and then they make motions to send it to us. That's what I understand.
But they're recommendation, and they have that with the...
Have you been to the inhale?
Oh, well, they...
And C, so some of these are...
They're distinct categories.
There are recommendations from the street committee, and it's to us to do action at the town council based upon their recommendation. Now, I don't believe they've done anything with Edmund Lane, and I don't remember it being on the street committee's last meeting. Oh, there's... Where's Mary? And I don't think Grace Street was brought up. I don't know what it is.
And Edmund Lane, I don't have my notes with me, but Edmund Lane was on... There was a discussion on Edmund Lane, too. And it's just Pandora's Box is what's happening, and I don't want to say too much, because I'm about to resign if things don't settle down.
I ask you a favor, can you just touch the microphone? It's making a... There we go. Excellent.
Might not be the one.
Let me just...
It might be.
Just for the microphone.
All right.
Just shout.
So Cynthia Avenue, they cannot make a... You cannot make a decision out, because you don't have a quorum.
There were several members...
So we can put that one on a workshop, Cynthia Avenue, and then finally make a decision, we got it now. Or try to. And then Riverside, they are saying, they want us to accept Riverside Main as a town road. So we could put that one there, and we can speak to them, we got it now, straight.
Yeah, I was going to say, is there any backup?
Well, that's what I'm saying, they're going to have to come to us with the backup.
Right, okay.
Lawrence Court, they did make a decision.
Lawrence Court, we did make a decision in Pournience, he has a whole bunch of... They won't sign the paperwork.
Oh, right.
You can't just leave it to the clerk to do this, but we've got the committee for it, because now...
But they were here before us.
Right, and so I now have about eight out of 36 instead of... And what do you want me to do when it doesn't? If you don't have a workshop and put directions, you're not going to have it.
At the last meeting, we recommended that Lawrence Court stop services, make a recommendation to the council, that Lawrence Court and Winterbury Estates stop the services, because they have not come through with the homeowners association for Winterbury, and Lawrence Court has not... All the residents down there haven't signed the necessary paperwork.
So why do we put Cynthia Avenue, Riverside Main, Lawrence Court, and Winterbury Estates in one workshop? Does that sound...
That is tremendously ambitious.
Do you think so?
Yes.
Just to get that many people in there.
I think maybe the Winterbury and Lawrence Court and Cynthia is separate.
I think we should do Cynthia first, because we've been discussing them forever. I think we need to make a decision on Cynthia.
I think we're going to have some... I think it's going to be, well, this is my own opinion, I think we're going to have more than one, because I think we're going to need to make sure we have all of the information from both sides, and I think that may take the lion's share of the discussion and time. We may have to come back with information. I mean, that's really what I would have hoped the streets committee would have resulted, or what the result of the streets committee on Cynthia Ave was, sort of those folks putting together all of the necessary backup and legal documents and research, so that we felt as though we had everything in our packet and understood what the legal arrangements and what existed on paper and in the clerk's office and in private hands. And without the committee being able to hold a quorum, it's difficult to get, especially from the other side, from the property owners, to get that information, so...
I can honestly say we have not seen Grace Street, that must have been one for Nancy.
That's one that was sent to me through Mr. Bellucci, and said that the only way he can get that approval is through the council, so they're all starting to head towards council. That, I believe, is a grass driveway.
It's off High Hill. It's fair to say, it's off High Hill. Yeah, I don't know why that's here, because that was basically a constituent request that came to the director of Public Works for services. He has discontinued services, because it's a grass area, and the individual who benefits from the services believes that those services have been devoted for many years and does not understand why they have been discontinued. So we work somewhat cross purposes, because the director of DBW is going to insist that he has no authority to do anything other than public street, so he takes matters into his own hands, and sending out the letters and discontinuing their services, and it doesn't appear to be that the street committee is keeping up with the pace of his decision-making. And this is where we find ourselves. I also think we've also found ourselves looking for things that don't exist, because in New Orleans, there just isn't a whole lot of records at all, and maybe we recollect what informal decisions were made, probably by phone call, informal conversation between past council or administrators in the past, with nothing to do with plowing streets, only one value, and it's quick, but over the passage of many years, we've arrived at many streets receiving services that are not public.
So they've been giving services to this grass path?
Yes.
I believe there are photos from 2013, last year, severe, about the services we provided.
And then we suddenly decided not to do it.
Can you just tell me again for going down in this storm in the last storm?
Oh, we didn't do...
And the other thing that happens is we have private contractors who will take on... They're driving around their zone, and they're seeing what appears to be a street and they plow it, because, first of all, they have no incentive not to, they're getting $20 an hour, and second of all, in some cases, they don't think their instructions are very clear, so they assume they're going to open up every possible roadway. And what they're doing is providing a service to it. I can understand that people object and make their own demands. I've been living at the same address for 10 years, and another street that's never been plowed. Ground is a grass, may be plowed, and I can't get my own street plowed. I guess at the end of this season, I'll call you up and see what I can do. Probably because the same person has been plowing you all these years, and now is not to plow you anymore.
All right, well, do we want to make the March 30th just Cynthia Avenue, or do we want to postpone it so that we can get all the business done? But the budget will be done by, I mean, by then, we will have presented that budget, so it's really the interviews, and...
Well, we need a public hearing for the...
Oh, I know, I know.
It's not like it's done on March 12th.
Before we move off this, I had a question for Mr....
Yeah.
All right, between you and Mr. Tice, if you can answer this, please. How much authority does the Public Works Director have to make that call? I know we directed him to say do Cynthia Ave, but what he's doing is within his means, when he's cutting off those streets, you have that authority? I mean, we don't have to make a vote to cut each street off.
Yes, we do.
No, well, where he was just saying that...
Well, we haven't done it yet.
No, I'm just saying, on properties, exactly like he was talking about, he sent the man a letter saying, you're a private street, we're not allowed to plow you. All right, I tend to agree with that. You know, we shouldn't have, you know, been plowing private streets, but when we start going to the streets that we've been plowing that are entire, not just like 50 feet in, but you're plowing an entire street, and it may be connected to another street that is accepted in town, that's, that happens in some cases, so, I mean, is Mr. Bellucci have the authority to just send those letters out like that?
Well, I'll give you my usual answer, yes and no. To the extent that it's clear, yes, he has the authority, he's the one there, and he has the authority and the responsibility, both to plow and service the public streets and to not provide those services to the unaccepted private streets. The problem is, this town, having been around for over 300 years, has a variety of streets, and the answer is, on several of these streets, not clear whether it is an accepted public street for the purposes of that maintenance, and that's a decision which is reserved solely to the town council. Not even the planning board can make that decision. Only the town council can decide whether to accept a street for the purposes of maintenance, or in this case, making a decision based on historical evidence before it, whether it has already made that decision, whether it's been accepted or should be accepted, based on the past actions.
So when a resident gets the letter and goes to Nancy and objects to it, then it comes to us?
But my only point is, I'm trying to figure out the criteria, and I can understand if it's a connector street, and it's, you know, there's no way for the fire department to turn around if we don't plow that, you know, connector, that it's a public... And then there were issues where, when the people were carrying their trash all the way to the end of the road, we had that one end of the lot that always had the, everything that blew out of the bins never got cleaned up, so it was a public health issue, because you were getting rodents in there, so we allowed the trucks to go down those private streets. So that's my point, if it's a public safety... So that's all taken into consideration when he makes his decision?
No, no.
Or do we have to...
You do that, because that's, and I think the council was on its way to making it, for example, with Lawrence Court, saying, all right, we understand that part of it's private, but it's to everybody's benefit, including the town, so we don't have to back up our trucks, that we do this anyway, even though it's private, but we want some acceptance from the owners, that they acknowledge it, and, you know, so we don't have to go back and end up paving that road someday. So I think you were on your way to it, but it's really a case-by-case basis that the council has to make that policy decision.
I'm trying to get my head around it here.
Right, I mean, I guess Sodipon Drive is another question, you know, it's public, private, public, you know, yeah, we have no legal obligation to do the private part, but does it make sense, it's still better for the public good, for the town, to do the pri... it's still better for the public good, for the town, to do the private part rather than be backing up on both ends?
Chief Blakely, did you have something to add?
Mr. Seuss's comments have segwayed into what my concern is. I'm looking to add to your dilemma.
Go right ahead.
How much support would the council give emergency services if we determine that the emergency services, we get down with an ambulance or a police car, we can't get out? Or if there's a certain criteria that we have to meet? Not just across the board, but we get down and say, "A certain area, here's a problem. We have the support we did in the past, and it's a new council. Are you going to say, 'Oh, this is okay' and I don't want to be making these calls and then getting other calls later on?" So I'm willing to make the call and determine it on an individual basis, but is the council gonna support those decisions?
I think it's, if it's a matter of life and death, we have to take care of whatever it may be. And yeah, I would support. I know I would.
Yep.
It would be frivolous decisions, I mean, I would run around checking, but it's something that we should do as far as public safety. If an ambulance goes down and a police car goes down and can't get back, we're gonna be able to at least sand the road on it.
Oh, yeah, we trust your judgment.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I do, and I'm sorry.
I'm just hoping that all of our department heads can kind of brainstorm on this a little bit and let us... Inform me anyways, because I need to know before we make decisions to cut streets off if it's gonna hurt public safety.
As far as something like that, I would contact the administrator and tell him that I've made a determination. If he says no, well, he'll be my boss, but at least we'll know that the council supports a decision made.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. What do we think? Do we wanna put Cynthia Ave on the March 30th workshop or do we wanna put...
I think we'd put it on the March 30th workshop.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
March 30th workshop. I need a motion for that.
Just that.
Just that.
Just that one.
So a motion's been made. Do I have a second to that motion? There's a reason why I'm doing this. All those in favor? And then we'll have a motion to make further workshops, but let's wait till we get through the March 30th for the other roads, which would be all the others on this agenda.
I'd just like to make one comment, Madam President. I remember back in the last week of December, I think Mr. Pelletier, Cynthia Avenue was up before it was done. And, you know, he said, "I hope this doesn't come up before it's next December." And here it is. It's not even December, it's February. And we're back on...
Well, that's why you have to make a decision before they need plowing again. Well, next winter.
On all streets.
On all streets.
All right, so... Well, we haven't, you know, to, for, just to sort of add to that, we haven't not made a decision because we're not willing to. I think we haven't made a decision because we really don't have all the information that we need, and it hasn't been presented in a way that we can make a decision. We had hoped that the Street Committee would come back to us with that information and a recommendation. But we kind of ran into roadblocks there. So I don't know if there's any way, short of official notice, to try and make sure people are aware that that meeting is gonna take place. I know you know the...
I think I have the list.
Yeah, okay, great. That's wonderful.
I mean, I'm not gonna be sending out letters to the members.
No, no, send them an email or...
Committing notice to the members.
Madam President, so it's Cynthia Avenue on the 30th?
Yes.
And only Cynthia?
Only Cynthia.
None of the others?
No, and that's what I'm...
And one of the others, so...
Well, I'd like to entertain a motion that we, Duaneian Hills, Soddy Pond Avenue, Old Bookmash, Riverside Lane, Lawrence Court, Winterbury Estates, and Edmund Lane and Gray Street at a further date.
At the discretion of the clerk, maybe?
At the discretion of the clerk.
That's a good idea.
You can't...
I'll keep them coming, but...
Uh, I think Edmund Lane and Gray Street haven't been reviewed by the Street Committee, and no recommendation has been made. Whereas the other ones, Indian Hills, Soddy Pond, Old Bookmash, Riverside, Lawrence Court, and Winterbury Estates, there have been recommendations made.
Edmund Lane has been before the Street Committee. They've said, "Go to the council. They can do nothing for you."
Yeah, Don O'clock called, Don O'clock stated that.
Yes, numerous phone calls. And there's other streets as well that just aren't listed on there. So I'll just keep going for a minute.
So maybe perhaps in those instances, and I don't remember which one you just said, was it Edmund? Maybe we need to take five minutes at a meeting, talk about Edmund, figure out what the issue is, and send an official request to the Street Committee for their services.
But they already sent it?
I know, but...
I know.
Maybe we'll work with Steve Belucci and come up with what we have.
What I would like to understand is, when the Street Committee is unable to opine on a particular street, I would... These are particularly sensitive. It would be nice for us to understand that and so that we know what streets are in conflict, we know what streets they just are unable to execute a recommendation, and what streets they have done. And that way, we're not sitting here having this conversation and not knowing what Gray Street or Edmund Lane, why we are... Why we need to talk about them, if we need to talk about them, if they need to be remanded to the Street Committee. I mean, I didn't find out Cynthia Avenue was a problem until someone who lived on Cynthia Avenue called me asking, "What is going on with Cynthia Avenue? It's been, you know, a couple of months and there's been no quorum." And I didn't know that, so...
So Nancy, you'll sort some of this out and see which ones we can make. If we can make quick decisions or at least some discussion, we could put them on our meetings if we're not...
Yes, I'll try to work with Steve Belucci on some of it. Because I think the town side should be... What we have for information should be pressed, too.
Do you know the date for the next Street Committee?
No, I don't, sir.
Rosemary.
Wednesday?
Wait a minute.
Next one.
This Wednesday?
Have you been there?
Yeah.
I have it for the 18th of February.
Correct, the 18th.
18th of February?
Town Hall?
Town Hall.
Yeah.
Yes, seven o'clock.
I was just gonna volunteer to attend so I can get up to speed on where they're at.
Okay. So there was a motion on the floor that I suggested to continue this to further dates.
Someone made that?
No, I asked for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
And this is to continue all the rest, further dates at the discretion of the Town Clerk. All those in favor? Opposed?
Okay.
Financial business. Town Administrator, excuse me, requests $7,415 from Council Contingency to pay Hoffman Engineering, Inc. for closure of underground storage tank on Riverside Drive. Mr. Walter.
Madam President, over the summer, I'm glad Bruce Cox is here tonight running the business, but he brought to my attention, an associate of his had, while wandering about, doing what people do, I guess, on public property, discovered the metal cap of an old fuel storage tank in the area where there used to be, many years ago, a DPW facility in town. Our friends at Carty did us the extremely beneficial service of burying it under a couple of feet of soil, but we knew it was there because we had photos from the earlier timeframe. And eventually Hoffman did discover the tank. He was able to do his usual business of sleuthing and probes and other tests that he does, find the tank. We were very fortunate. The tank was pretty much empty. It was still structurally sound, but it was not gonna last forever in its condition. It had a little bit of groundwater in it. DEM allowed us to fill it in place, so Floe Buffalo was used to completely fill up the old tank. And we are certified as closed. But all of the work, engineering, the permitting required $7,400. That was not in the budget. That is the purpose of your contingency fund, is to resolve these pressing legal matters because there isn't legal litigation to close a tank when you find it. And hence my request this evening. I think your backup should have had all the invoice activity.
Like to entertain a motion or any discussion?
How much does that leave us in our contingency?
Just under eleven.
Just under eleven.
Is it eighteen right now?
That's right. What's the return of the... The total you'll do is $7,415.
Okay. The work's already been done.
This work has been done. The tank's closed. I'll make the motion, I meant that we would pay them $7,415 in funds to pay Hoffman Engineering, Inc. for closure of the underground storage tank on Riverside Drive as will be described in Agenda Attachment F1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Opposed?
Town Administrator Warren Phoebe from Request, Chris Clarden.
Madam Chair, Bruce is here. Is Chris here as well?
Yes, Chris is here.
I'm gonna rely upon your explanation for this, but I did attach a manifesto in support of this request. I believe that we are fortunate when residents of this town try to make their living in the waters of the town, and we have to make sure we apply our regulations uniformly and correctly to all of their situations. And I'll leave Mr. Cox to explain it, but we probably do owe at least some refund to this individual for many years of overpayment. Go ahead, Bruce.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Thank you. I know, a prior item, by the way, that was Charles Lawrence of my commission that was aware of that tank and really doggedly pursued it because it was a safety hazard. Actually, it was walking distance from the road, just a few steps in. And once it failed, it was going to be a trap for somebody. It could have been a trap for a child. So I'm just very glad that we were ultimately able to find it, and the administrator said, "Fill this and take care of it." Yes, you have my letter from November 5 on this issue. Chris was a member of our commission. He was here this evening. But more importantly, what this is about is, he's an aquaculturist, a farmer of the sea, if you will, and he works, makes his money as a commercial fisherman. And four harbor masters back, he was told, "Here's commercial mooring." And he all just sort of blindly went on along, and he used, understandably, to this rock that here he is, a taxpayer in the town of Tiverton, he's paying as much for a commercial mooring as an out-of-towner would be because he's a commercial fisherman. And we had a mooring subcommittee meeting, and this carried on right forward with all the harbor masters, including Dave Banier, who's probably the best harbor master any town could ever have had. And we went on to Harbor Commission's little mooring subcommittee to analyze all the mooring fees that try to make things more equitable between different-sized boats and such. And this was one of the items on our agenda. And we said, "Well, let's look at the definition of a commercial mooring up front finally." And we find out that the definition of commercial mooring is one that is rented to somebody else, someone that is actually profiting from the use of the mooring by collecting money from a stranger to the town or even a town or person who does not have a mooring. So that person is taking the privilege of a mooring location and making money on it, of the mooring location itself. Has nothing to do with what the vessel that is assigned or on that mooring is doing. So wrongfully, for all those years, Chris has been charged a commercial rate when, in fact, he's a town resident paying town taxes and should have been paying a town rate. And he put forward, you know, he dug through his records, found canceled checks, found notes, found different things, and satisfied our commission that all this time, he should have been paying just strictly a town rate. And he was paid $3,700 when he should have paid closer to $600. So he is overpaid by $3,100 over all these years. And it was simply unjust that he was doing so. He was forced to do so. It was an oversight by someone way back, 2002. It is wrong. It is a debt that actually town owes to Chris. Has nothing to do with him being on our commission. Indeed, he fully abstained from any involvement or discussion about this other than saying, "Guys, look at it." And it was embarrassing, and to myself, embarrassing to Mr. Banier. When we looked at the definition and said, "My God, it's right there." And we have been stupid and blind not to go and look at it. So in that instance, for that reason, we feel it's really inappropriate. Here you have a member of your town, citizen of your town, pays taxes on his house and everything else, hard-working guy, and we've, in essence, excessively taxed him. So it was unanimous by the Count Board and my commission. Indeed, they specifically requested, "Let's please push the down council on this point." That's why I'm here. And it was, I'm glad, I'm actually grateful for the blizzard while you were suffering. I was actually playing in it. But I was grateful for the blizzard that it was continued this evening so I could be here to emphatically push this point. Chris is here, I wish to just ask him about it, but that's the gist of this request. I think it's only fair, it's only appropriate. He's not asking for an extra compensation, he's just saying, "Make it fair." In various years, he could have gotten a cheaper rate than $50 because of discounts, but he's not asking for those kind of adjustments. He's just saying, "Make it fair." He's a $50 average for the years I've been here. I can demonstrate, I paid $3,700. Can I please have my $3,100 back, please?
Any questions for the council?
I just have one question, Bruce. Have you sort of done an audit and made sure there aren't any other situations like this currently?
No, we have not. But there are very few actual commercial fishermen that are residents of the town. So there are only one or two of those vessels, and we haven't... They have not come forward. We haven't done an audit of them.
Okay.
Any other questions?
But we're gonna be going forward that this is going to be a new...
That'd be correct.
...criteria.
Absolutely. Well, we now know exactly, a commercial mooring is one that is rented to somebody else as opposed to fishermen.
So that's like standard, standardish boatyard they have?
They are commercial. Those are all commercial. They write a very substantial check to the town every year for all their commercial moorings that they rent out to people.
So that's an example of...
Those are true commercial moorings. That's correct.
Commercial moorance.
Absolutely. A sublet of a...
Yeah.
Subletting of the space.
Right.
Because, you know, you have a plenty of the space on the bottom.
Okay.
Does he currently study using the mooring?
Yes, he is.
He will be?
Absolutely. As a resident, as he has every legal right to do so.
I had a question for Mr. Tights, please. Is this irregular? Does the council actually have authority to make a refund when it wasn't a budgeted item? And second, do we have the ability to give him a credit?
Yes, yes, and yes. Yes, this is irregular. It's unusual. Yes, you have the authority to give him a refund, to say, "We'll give him a credit going forward instead of a refund," or to say, "No," or a partial. And I would just want to add something on our own, that it's been the policy on the other issues when I've dealt with this. By law, taxes only go back, you can only go back three years. So if someone's overpaid their taxes and looking for a refund, it's only three years. And vice versa to the town. If someone underpaid their taxes, we only go back three years looking for the difference. We had a situation earlier this year with someone who was paying more than they should have for, is it the water? It's the water district fees?
Yeah.
They were paying more than they should have, the sewer... Yeah, they were paying, x, right. But because of a problem with the water weeding, they were paying us more in the sewer than they should have. And they had been paying basically for two buildings when they really only owed for one for about ten years. And my suggestion at that time was that, you know, there is some responsibility that individuals have to know what they're being charged and pursue those appeals on their own. And I recommended at that time that, yes, we, the fair thing to do would be refund it, but we should only go back to three years. So my recommendation to you, just as a matter of policy, is if you do decide you want a refund or a credit, I would recommend limiting it to the three years rather than going all the way back. I hate to leave it... What about someone who's been paying the wrong amount for 20 or 40 years? I really don't like to see that precedent of that sort of long-term refund.
I kind of agree with Mr. Tights, so if you were ready, I'd make a motion.
Hey, anyone else? Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to keep talking about that a little bit. That, I'm trying to make, I'm trying to sort of rationalize that where there's a set rate that you want to know a certain, you know, you should know what your tax is or what your, because it's an easily computable thing. This is somewhat different. This is a commission or the town setting a rate that is higher than, not just there was an incorrect meter reading, but telling someone that the rate was $500 when it was really $50 and then realizing they were incorrect to do that in the first place. Is there any distinction?
Well, I do. I don't, I don't think, I think it was an interpretation of the harbor master, which the Harbor Commission has now determined was an incorrect interpretation. And the Harbor Commission has that authority. But I don't think that it was necessarily, it wasn't like a wrong meter reading or whatnot. It was an interpretation. It was a policy decision that the harbor master made. The current Harbor Commission has determined that that was wrong. And I don't disagree with that. Certainly, the public policy interests of supporting commercial fishermen and the way it's listed as a definition, that's fine. But that's really what it is. It's the Harbor Commission determining that the interpretation was incorrect.
Mr. Tights? My argument would be that it really, and I thought this was the argument you were going to. And that is, it really is discretionary, case by case, as to what fairness amounts to. Because in a sense, the argument might be made, "Well, isn't it unfair for Mr. Tights to arbitrarly deciding it was three years? And if he could have just as arbitrarly decided it was a five-year." I would prefer just to take it on a case-by-case basis. Well, let's say, I've been here for six years. This is the first time something like this has happened. It's not as though they're going to be happening every other month. My concept of fairness is, he was told what the fee arrangement was. He agreed to pay that fee arrangement. It turns out that the interpretation was rather flagrantly incorrect.
It was grossly misunderstood. The harbor master who told him it was commercial was wrong. The definition was very clear on the books and what it was. In terms of the taxes, you are dealing with absolutely every citizen. There is a statutory limitation of three years as to how long the town can go back and how far back an individual can be held responsible. There is no such statutory obligation here with a mooring fee. This is a fee that is assessed by the town. It costs the town literally nothing to collect this fee. So to suggest that this is going to skew the town's rights or obligations, the water reading issue, you know how many houses you have. You look at your bill. If it says two houses, you should say, "Oops, I get a bill every single year." This is, he gets the same bill. Our bill every year to him said, "Commercial mooring. We were wrong," every year. So, I mean, there is a difference. I absolutely agree with you.
That's why I say, I really think it's discretionary, case by case. And in this, in this particular situation, I really think he was overcharged $3,100 based on an incorrect interpretation of a statutory fee. I don't have any problem at all making a motion that he be reimbursed at $3,100.
I would disagree. There's something to be said for acknowledging one's mistakes and trying to remedy them as best we can.
Do I have a second? Then we can have further discussion. Yes, he just made the motion.
You made that as a motion?
Well, I'll make that as a motion that we reimburse Mr. Clardon $3,100 for the mooring miscalculation under the circumstances we have fully set forth in Agenda Attachment F2.
Second?
Any further discussion?
Where will that money come from?
Come from the contingency fund.
I think if you could, I think you need to add to the motion where it's going to come from.
It was suggested.
There's, sorry, there's a suggestion. There are two suggestions on the administrators so that the treasurer will know going forward. I think you need to decide where or what other, please.
Madam Chair, Mr. Clardon addressed the council even though there's a motion pending at this point.
One second. Jay, in your motion, would you like to say where we're taking it from if you see the two suggestions?
What is the argument against taking it out of unfunded liability?
Could you both speak into the microphone?
What is the argument against taking the sum out of unfunded liability?
I was just going to say that basically, that account was probably only a third of what we could possibly need in a worst-case scenario.
Then I would stick with taking it out of the council's contingency fund.
Would you like to add that to your motion?
I'll add that to the motion.
All right, second. That amendment?
Yes. You may speak.
I don't wish to be a burden to the town financially. That's not my point for being here tonight. Just to be clear. But there is a concept, I believe, of civic morality. That being said, I would like to propose perhaps a deal for the town. I hate to use the word, but I will. Or maybe we could come to some sort of an agreement about refund versus credit. Am I being clear? Okay. So maybe, in the interest of the town's finances, which are near and dear to my heart as a taxpayer here, we could work out some sort of credit refund ratio. Mr. Tights, does that sound amenable to you?
Well, it's not.
It's not my thing. As I indicated right from Mr. Seuss's point, they have discretion. I pointed out my statement there. Does that sound amenable to you?
Well, I think it would be something, I have a motion on the floor. We'll see if that passes. If that doesn't pass, then we may want to negotiate something else. That's what I think. Any discussion?
The thing is, the credit piece of it is, it's a $50 a year. So it's going to take a long time to pay down $3,100, $50 a year.
That's why I asked if he was going to be.
Even a combination approach is still going to be, you know, even if you say, "Well, the next five years," that's still a negligible amount of money.
$250. All right, I have a motion on the floor and second. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thanks very much.
It would be more trouble to keep track of it over two years or five years or whatever. It'd be too much trouble to track it.
He did a different color and left three on it.
Sixty years is a long time unless he passes it on to his children. All right, this is my Councilman Madera's update on Budget 2015-16. As I said before, we have to start really looking at this budget. We had a budget meeting on Saturday. We discussed whether or not we should meet this Saturday. Is everybody in agreement to this Saturday? Okay. And we have to decide who we will take. Now, I know the planning board has some problems with their budget. I'd like to have them come and speak to us. So that would be one department. DPW is still out of town.
I believe that's true.
So we'll do planning, recreation. We haven't tackled recreation, and we need you there for that.
Yep.
Recreation will be a big one, but at least we have. And any, what else am I? We've done police. We did fire. We did senior, right, tax collector, senior center.
Tax assessor.
Tax assessor. DPW will have to make on it further.
So I think you need the administrator's budget, building zoning, planning department, planning board.
All right.
Recreation.
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 And we need an update on library.
Whether or not we've done anything.
Because we were kind of sharpening our pencil on that.
Yeah. And I'm going to meet with you tomorrow. And I have like a little, they were calling it a bucket list with certain things that came up about the last, the last meeting and things we discussed. And I'll go over that with you.
So just to recap, it's Saturday at 9:00 on February 14th. And we have all the planning, zoning departments, recreation, and a follow-up on the library.
And administration.
And the administration. Thank you.
Is that all right with everyone?
You can just put, you can put other in there, too. And we can knock off pro judge or all the little ones, too.
If we have time, we can just continue on. Oh, we do need the recreation here with us, planning here with us.
Correct.
This is just so we invite the people we need here.
And it is Valentine's Day.
Yeah. So we could go nine to.
And that'll be a special meeting so you can.
Be another special meeting. And that would be next week. Is anyone available the following week? The following week, we're supposed to have that joint meeting. And like I said, I'd like to postpone that. Would we like to make another budget that night? Maybe 7:00 to 10:00? And kind of, at that point, maybe make changes. It was a Tuesday, 17th. We were supposed to have a joint meeting, but we're going to postpone that. So we'll make that another budget.
You weren't going to use that for the legal services?
I was thinking we'll do, I want to get this budget. Legal services, we're going to do the next week, I think. Would that be all right?
So you want the 17th?
The 17th is another budget meeting.
Another special meeting for budget.
And that's just so we can just kind of fire this out. Yeah. Okay, so we're going to have a meeting February 14th and the 17th. The February 17th will be 7:00 o'clock. Hopefully, we can get that, just like three hours there.
Or less.
Or less. All right, new business. Town Administrator requests permission to advertise for code enforcement officer.
Madam President, very quickly, we are back in the market for a code enforcement officer, which involves building code, zoning code, and certified floodplain manager credentials. As you may recall, we've been using the services of Mr. Bishop, Wett Bishop, from North Keystone, who's a retired certified building official to sign off on all necessary paperwork. He was appointed by the state building commissioner under his state authority to do so, to make sure he had somebody. We must have someone at all times in this town, on-call 24/7 for fire scenes and signing off on building permits and all of that. So we presently, he has used his authority once again to provide us with a different individual. Neil Hall, who up until recently was the building official and zoning official for the town of Cumberland, and filled in from time to time in the city of Onezaka over the years past. Neil is a resident of Lakeville, Massachusetts. But he is only interim. He may or may not apply for a full-time position. And he is not favored in any way. And it has been explained to him many times that his role here is on Jack Laidy's authority as state building official, so that we can continue the business of the town. Having said that, this is a good time to be in the market for one of the few times, because there have been elections and turnovers and maladies around the state in January. Well, there are some of these officials who won't fault of their own. Many mayors just put in their own team. So we've got two or three different people floating around out there who are highly experienced and qualified in the field. I thought that was the right direction to take the town. I'd like to advertise for the position again and get the merit of the personnel board as quickly as possible. So you'll notice, this advertisement is different. So this time, I'm insisting there are two things that I did not insist upon last time. One is, you must already be a CBO. We can go on and on about whether or not the approach last time worked out exactly as planned. Individual took the test, did very well, not well enough the first time. But there was no one available to us. We had advertised three times and not received someone who was even going to be a strong candidate to take the test. And at least in this case, we found somebody who really wanted the job badly and worked very hard. But at this point, there are CBOs available, and that's all I want. The other thing is, and I forget which one where the council mentioned it, but it was a flag in my mind. We wanted actual enforcement experience because that is what this job is. I don't know if it was Councilman Pelletier or Councilman Perry. I'm trying to remember. Or actually, maybe Councilman, no. But it has to be someone who has done this for at least five years and knows what it's like, go to municipal court, to plan the record in a zoning board hearing, all the rest of it. So those two things are now absolutely required. We will interview anyone who doesn't meet those two criteria.
Yeah, I think, I was going to ask about that because it reads differently. And I think this is, it's kind of simple and stupid, but it makes the most sense that we want a code enforcement officer that is also going to do building inspections, not the other way around. Which I think is sort of the Achilles' heel of someone who does both jobs that is really well-versed in construction and building permits, but doesn't necessarily have the wherewithal with code enforcement. I'm excited. Excited might be a strong word. I'm looking forward to the result. I'm looking forward to the result of this advertisement.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Well, I would move that we authorize permission to advertise for the code enforcement officer as attached in G1.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? Joe, are you opposed or in favor?
I'm sorry, I was late.
You in favor? You did this on me. Town Administrator, discussion regarding method to address fire department overtime.
Madam Chair, I think this would best be postponed given our desire to keep this meeting quick. And then we have an executive session update where actually I want to attack this at that point and not in public.
I was also thinking that this could be put on the budget committee meeting for.
That'd be good.
Not Saturday, the Tuesday, maybe.
Sure.
17th.
Yeah, and then we can discuss it further. You got that, Nancy? Town Administrator, do I need a motion?
I think it'd be better to have the motion allowed if you.
Excuse me, madam. You know why? Because I am going to have to advertise with Monday being a holiday. The 17th is on the Tuesday. So we have to post both these meetings.
Do we have to put an agenda on it? We don't have to put specific.
No, it's going to be the budget discussions and possible votes. So it'll be a special meeting. And I'll add this to it on the 17th.
Right. And do I need a motion, you're saying?
I think you said a motion. Since it's an agenda here, you should have.
So to put this in executive and also on that.
I think executive, it's already covered. I think it would be just a motion to continue it to the February 17th budget workshop.
I'll make a motion to continue it to the 17th workshop.
Special meeting. Special meeting.
Discussion regarding method to address the fire department overtime.
Second. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? Town administrator requests approval of town planner appointment and employment contract for Mark Russo.
Madam President, I'm gonna give you a couple of introductory comments and I'd invite Mr. Russo to take a seat up here so that you can meet him and ask him questions. But I did want to update you on the process. I requested that this council give me some clear guidance on whether this position should be filled or not. And there was a vote and the majority vote was to fill the position. And we advertised, we went through the planning, the personnel board process, and I had the opportunity to sit in on the screening interviews as well as to conduct my own final round interviews. Um, I believe you have some of the feedback, I hope it's in there, from the interview process. If not, you at least have Mr. Russo's resume. I want to be clear that the three candidates, the three finalists, were all AICP certified planners. All of them had no less than five years of experience in significant communities that deal with the issues that are dealt with in Tidon. One of them was a repeat finalist, someone, you know, this is the circle I run in as economic development director in the city of One Socke and in my past, I'm familiar with the personalities, many of the personalities in this field in Rhode Island. So I felt like we had a very highly qualified pool. After interviewing all the candidates, Mr. Russo stood out to me as the gentleman that I wanted for this position. Those of us who've worked in economic development field in older industrial cities perhaps have a little bit of a chip on our shoulder because I don't think anybody works harder than us for those times in our lives when we're really studying a community, trying to find a niche, trying to fit people in. And Mark has worked not only as an economic development director in New Bedford, but was also a planning director there and started off, if I remember my resume correctly, started off with the industrial park.
That's correct.
So with the industrial park, we had a development director to overall planning director and then moved on to the town of Easton, Massachusetts after maybe some short stints in between with Norwood. Um, but Easton was a very powerful example for me because it is a town about the size of Tidon dealing with many of the same tensions, many of the issues between conservation and rural character with the need to develop a tax base robust enough to defend the municipal budget. So with all of those experiences and the fact that at one point as co-director of the Massachusetts Planning Association, Mark was involved in designing their entire AICP program. So he's not just certified, he, you know, doesn't just, what was he also saying? I forget.
He's also a client?
Yeah, that's right. I'm not just a senior club president, I'm also a client. I guess it goes. But I think with, with that introduction, I just want to make it clear, we have a consummate professional, highly qualified individual and he has my unqualified recommendation to you as the person who can fulfill the terms of, this is by a unique arrangement. We went with a one-year contract. We will come back before we're in one year knowing full well that we asked you to take a tough vote to assess the performance of the planning department under Mark's leadership. Um, but I feel confident that the test he'll pass, but it will be there and you have the opportunity to weigh this. One thing you'll notice about the contract is a very clear emphasis on what Mark's tasks are. And leading that list is the industrial park. We need a strategy that can carry through all the way and by the way, events, events are catching up with us. We have a lot of interest in the park. And if I don't have time to babysit the tree, I don't, I don't, Mark, to be, if, if all I did was the industrial park, and I know this because I worked as redevelopment agency executive director in the city, was that it can take up your whole life every single day. And I have other things, budget, personnel matters, other things that you expect of your administrator. So this current person is really gonna help us and I think we got the right guy for that. By the way, you see the other two requirements, they're also covered in the local newspaper. So with no further ado, I invite you to ask any questions. I'm confident Mark will be able to answer them. Mark wants to introduce himself.
You set off on good things, I really appreciate those comments.
I was gonna ask you to tell us a little bit about yourself, but Matt pretty much took care of that. Any questions from the council?
I have some. I have some. Do you wanna go first?
Um, sure. Um, Mark?
Yes?
I've actually done some research on you. Back in New Bedford, you worked for Linda Moret, she's the.
Oh, sure.
Can you speak up, please?
I'll try to. You're welcome. Did a little research and I checked out New Bedford, Easton, and it came highly recommended from both those, those towns. A little bit of, you worked in Massachusetts mostly all of your life?
In my career, public sector career.
Okay.
Yes.
What's the difference in the planner in Rhode Island and then in Massachusetts? Is there a large difference?
No, it's just separate, a neighboring legislation. Well, the processes are pretty similar. Well, the public requires, the zoning requires, it's just a few different nuances. There is, in Massachusetts, a comprehensive plan is suggested, the planning board is doing, but there's more power, more weight in Rhode Island if it has to be conformist with a comprehensive plan. There's, there's a major difference in Massachusetts where they've been trying to change the law for the thirty years to be more conformist with Rhode Island. This is one area where Rhode Island needs a proper planning perspective.
Okay. I'm glad you led me into that. Have you read our Convenance of Plan?
Parts of it.
No, I'm trying to catch up to it.
Okay.
Have you looked at the zoning ordinances?
I've been looking at it also and the subdivision regulations and everything I can get my hands on will be up to speed when I take over the position, hopefully.
Okay. You've been planning consultant from two oh nine to two thirteen. Who have you been consulting with?
Basically working, cooperating with other engineering companies on smaller projects, land development projects. And some of the background are supportive documentation, fiscal impact analysis, some things of that nature.
Okay.
Permitting through the state agencies, coordinating some of those.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
Hi, Mark. Oh, Peter, really, really quick questions. So basically, you have never practiced municipal, as a municipal planner in the state of Rhode Island, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And you are, you stated that, you know that Rhode Island has different regulations than the state of Mass. Um, do you know our regulations from the D E M?
Pretty well, um, yes, because we're going back and forth. Yes.
Yes, yes. How about the Department of Transportation?
I'm gonna get more up to date with those regulations, but pretty, pretty well known those. Why I would say that was I worked for a commercial developer, working with projects in Rhode Island and Massachusetts.
Okay.
Strip mall development. So I've gone back and forth across the lines.
How about, I'm familiar with the statewide planning of Rhode Island?
Very much so. And I know some of the principles that lead that agency.
Okay. How about the state affordable housing regulations?
I'm getting more up to speed on that. I've done comprehensive permits in Massachusetts, original grades of appeal, number of those. Um, I'm getting more familiar with the nuances in Rhode Island.
Okay. How about the CRMC regulations, coastal resource management?
Uh, I'm pretty, I'm pretty aware of rest with that. Been involved with coastal zone management in Mass, Rhode Island, been involved with harbor master planning, familiar with that terminology.
How about, do you know, um, how to use the GSI system?
Yes, I do. Actually, say the city of New Bedford, we started that process. We started a heating system and I've used it over the years of my career.
So you're very familiar with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question for Mr. Oshack. So if this appointment was made tonight, how are we going forward? The, the person that's currently serving as the planner, is he gone?
There is nobody currently.
Cecil Group has been filling in.
No, no.
They're doing the zoning rewrite, aren't they?
No, they're doing the comprehensive plan.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, comprehensive plan.
But, but they're not working as the planner.
No, well, I thought he was actually involved with the Convenance of Plan at some point.
He is. And I'm gonna answer your question by, I think, cutting to the chase. You'll notice, my budget proposal for next year, which is why the planning board isn't exactly thrilled with it, is I zeroed out all the consulting.
Yes.
I want the planner to do the planning work.
Right.
And I don't want to rely upon consultants that are not directly accountable to the administrator or to this council doing this work going forward. I, I wanna take an experiment with having a highly qualified individual that reports to you doing this work. So at the present time, as you know, Kate resigned as interim planner several weeks ago, actually, a couple months ago.
That's why I assume that the part-time planner, which is what the budget committee had recommended.
They've already been figuring in on the schedule of work that was approved when the consulting contract was approved.
Okay. So, so basically, he's gonna stay on until the end of the fiscal year doing what he's doing with the comprehensive plan rewrite?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, we signed a contract with the Cecil Group to complete a schedule of work. And as far as I'm concerned, he is under the obligation to completely fill all of that work out. If there's anything that's not in that schedule of work that still needs to be done to complete the comprehensive plan process, and there is, there's nursing this thing through the statewide approval process, that would now fall to the planner and we will not pay the Cecil Group to perform that function.
So I'm just, I'm just curious because I don't wanna get backed up and then, you know, have to have problems in the future with, uh, I'm, I'm not sure how familiar he's gonna be in that short time to be able to assume all of this, so, you know.
But I have, my counterpoint would be, I have no more confidence in somebody whose job is to do it every single day. Now, a consultant who managed multiple clients can only turn his attention to it from time to time. So there's a both a positive and a negative. Um, when you, when you go through this process, you recognize that they publish their criteria and they are reachable people. The statewide planning council, that's what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to answer questions and cooperate with local planners to get this process done. They're not supposed to be an obstacle, they're supposed to be our friend. So the more attention we turn to it, the more energy we put to it, I actually think the greater chances of efficiency and success.
Well, let me say that, you know, see, you know, this idea of a full-time planner has been contested. I mean, it was split right down the middle with the planning board every year, I mean, of the budget committee each year. But, uh, I think for the first time, we've actually been starting to use what the budget committee had recommended, the part-time planner. But I'm, it's just my personal opinion, if he was going to come on, I don't know if it's better to not throw a bunch of responsibility on him right away and let him get up to speed on the type of things that he needs to know, like he was talking about a land use, comp plan, zoning and, and also getting around, also, but, well, I mean, is he, would he go to the meetings and kind of sit in and watch going on? Is that, is that gonna be?
Yes.
He certainly can.
I need to understand what's gonna happen because I wanna make sure we don't get to the end of the, I wanna make sure that this guy is really gonna be up to speed, all right? Cause there's so much going on in this town.
Just to clarify, Matt, the, the contract for the Cecil Group is very narrow. It's just for preparation and development of the comprehensive plan update.
Correct.
It has nothing to do with anything else, industrial parks, zoning rewrites, anything.
Right.
We've, we've had the Cecil Group completing those tasks, uh, just the zoning, the, um, form-based code, but that was under kind of a fifty-fifty arrangement. It was also a contract. We had some money from grants from the Newport Chamber and we had some, uh, it was all grant money, wasn't it? Most of it?
Yeah.
If I remember correctly.
It was before my time.
Yeah, I think it was mostly paid for by grants anyway.
I thought he was in, I thought, I'm sorry, I don't know the gentleman's name from the Cecil Group, but I thought he was involved.
Steve Cecil or Ken Buckland.
To look at the, the changes at the Convenance of Plan. So he's been working on that too.
Because of the Convenance. But it was only in the Convenance.
Yeah, yep.
It's just in the Convenance.
Under that, okay, it was under that. All right, so.
We hired him on a, on a consulting basis for meetings and to moderate a, a meeting, a workshop and, uh, a couple other little here's and there's, but that wasn't, um, huge.
The only point is, he wasn't, he wasn't available when we needed him, so it's, and at a part-time. I just thought that we would, you know, sting, I didn't think there was that many issues. I mean, we talked about the industrial park, exactly, we're just trying to sell the industrial park. I mean, it's, I don't think we're gonna spend the eight million that was proposed to put in all the roads and utilities. It's not gonna happen, so, I mean, we need a realtor for the industrial park, not a planner, really.
Look, I was just gonna say, I like Ken Buckland and I like this, the work the Cecil Group has done. Just, uh, every time they do work for us, and we ran into this with the, um, when they moderated, Stephen, Ken moderated that big thing at the high school. They charge rental car fee, they charge time to get here, they charge, um, meals and those sorts of things, because they're a consultant and I do the same thing for a living. So I also charge people mileage and parking and meals and things like that. So, you know, it's, it's, I think that night cost us in the range of three or four thousand dollars. No, it wasn't that much, maybe it was a little less. But still, that's one night of work for two or three thousand dollars on a consulting basis. So I did, I just, that, I reminded myself of that.
Joe, I just think we're back at the old document on whether or not we want a planner in, in the council direction to go and hire.
Well, I'm on a fact-finding mission because I'm like, what should we do? What's the best value for the taxpayers? And I just don't wanna sell them a bill of goods that somehow, if we hire a planner, all of a sudden, economic development's gonna, because there's a whole lot of work on our tax structure and things like that and our land use, you know, the way we, you know, zone things that we need to work on, you know, that, that need to be done to bring economic development in. It's not gonna be just hiring one person and then boom.
No, it's, a lot of the work has been done at the park. Cause you have the overlay, you have, really, you've set up a perfect situation. You own the land, you have a mostly administrative process for permit approvals. All engineering's been done. You've got the land layout. What you're looking for is someone who devotes the energy, who's skinning the game as his professional reputation and his accountability to the council on a regular basis. I mean, you need every two weeks, you can ask for an update every two weeks. We'll ask the fire chief for an overtime update every month. You can do that. But being sensitive to these concerns is why I asked Mark to agree to a long-year contract. Because if it really just doesn't work, then we know. But what you've been doing, in my opinion, as an outsider who's been here now for a year, hasn't worked. You had a realtor. The property was titled up. It didn't get sold. It wasn't aggressively marketed to the right clients. And for those of us who've done this work before, we look at the universe as what will fit this town, the type of land, and it's all we ever do as economic development people in, in any municipality, is you boil the whole universe down to your target group and then you start to work hard. And knowing that you have the support of Commerce for Ireland in this is absolutely key. The other thing that we've been talking about doing, whether it's the option we follow or not, one option is to apply to the E D A for economic development facilities or infrastructure grant, which would require a match from the town. Of all the applicants for this position, only one has successfully applied for one of those grants. Mark? So knowing that you're a tracker, gonna be able to do it, he could first of all inform us on how much work is truly involved in it. And secondly, make sure we put together all the right pieces. But if that's not the option we choose, if we can sell pieces off more quickly, then all our due diligence would go to Mark. Right now, it isn't anybody. It's not the Cecil Group. And to the extent that it is the administrative office, I, I know how to do this. I do need due diligence, but I have other duties. So instead of spending eight hours a day on it, I'm spending one. So my personal view and what I recommended to this council that you hire a planner was based on the fact that I think I can do good work, but I would feel much more comfortable if you had a trained professional, certified professional pursuing this full-time and try to get you the best possible option for the park and for the other duties that are listed in the contract.
I just had one more question from Mr. Tights. Uh, who, who directly, who directs the, as far as, all right, my.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be Mr. Tights' question.
Well, no, I think.
It would be the administrator. No, the administrator would, would direct the planner.
Is that correct?
Yes and no. Yes, the administrator direct, administrator hires the planner, is considered a department head.
Right.
So he is under the direction of the administrator. He also works to support the planning board. So the planning board also assigns various tasks as well. Um, and if there's a conflict between the plans that the planning board assigns and that the administrator assigns, then they have to work that out too. And as indicated, the boards and commissions fall under the administrator.
Administrator, of course, the administrator.
So it's sort of a shared, I mean, for instance, I'm just saying that, who's the big boss? Obviously, the administrator, correct? So it, my only point is, I think that's where we kind of ran awry with the last planning situation. I guess there was different personalities, so I just, just want him to understand what he's getting into. But, uh, some will love you, some will hate you. That's as clear as I can be on this situation.
I just have, I just have two more questions. Any last? I have two more.
I have some questions. Go ahead.
I just have two. Um, reading into, you've been a planner for a while in different locations. Working with the planning board, how do you find yourself?
I've had good relationships with all the planning boards I've worked with. I educate them, I support them, I show them different avenues to take, different policy options, and I try to stay neutral and try to get the discussion going on the board, and that's why I've had good relationships with them.
And I have one last. Planner's been highly contested in this town, as you're hearing. Another of the things that I've said through the year is that I would not vote for a planner unless I was updated monthly by that person. Would you have a problem giving us a monthly update on what you're doing?
Not at all. Always did that for the administrator, the town councils, town board, whatever.
I just want to prove your worth.
Accountability.
Accountability.
Thank you.
So you're basically talking about basically a diary, what he does for day-to-day.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be too extensive.
No, 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 just highlights.
Well, that would be part of the monthly report from the town administrator. There is a section for planning.
Yeah, it does come in, but I want to make sure that we do get it.
Look at it, Jim.
Just a few questions. Matt, during the interview process, did you involve the planning board in that process?
Not this time. I did last time, and the recommendation, at least of the chairman, wasn't received that way, with a lot of respect. So this time, I did not involve the planning board. The, there are communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts where the planning board is elected, and this is a very different type of situation. Town Seco comes to example. The planner in Seco reports to the planning board, because that's who hires him, but he also reports to the administrator day-to-day. It is a terribly difficult and contentious place to be, a planner. In this particular instance, if you look at the duties I've asked that Mark focused on in his year-long contract, first year of this contract, they are the kinds of duties that would be driven largely by the administrator and by the council, frankly, because they are priorities that have been enumerated in several conversations in public about the industrial park being such a high priority, making sure we successfully navigate the application of the Coprenato Group, and maintain neutrality of the administration, and still provide good information and a clear transparent process to all the parties involved. Those are the kinds of things, those are not planning board oversight questions, those are questions directly coming to my office. So that's how I proceeded.
Okay, next question. Does this position, would that eliminate Commonwealth engineering?
No.
No, definitely not. Commonwealth engineering is our backstop on engineering questions, and I cannot possibly emphasize to this council the value of our relationship with Commonwealth. They have caught so many mistakes, attempts to cheat the town on a lottery project and other places, they have more than proven their value and their worth to us, and our relationship will continue. And Mark may not understand this fully yet, but right now the Commonwealth advises all of our boards, the technical review committee, which is more or less ad hoc, advisory, as well as the planning board, and time-to-time other functions. And they're worth their weight in gold at this point, the advice they provide.
No, I, they do a valuable service. I was just wondering if that professional services is still in the budget, or whether that was one of the ones that was cut. I'm assuming that this contract was reviewed by legal. It's a, is that correct? I don't want to make an assumption.
Yes, he did provide it with the materials. I would not be aware of not having a chance to discuss it. I have one question, I'll mention it now then, which is, there's reference to a 40-hour week, but there's a requirement for the evening hours. And my question is, do you intend to provide comp time, or is it really more than 40 hours? I just think you should decide that upfront.
Salary rate.
No, it's a salary, there's no overtime. But is it comp time, or is it, then maybe the 40 hours should be not in there? That's my concern.
I'm sorry to be flippant, Andy, but it's in all of the contracts, so don't bring it up now. The expectation is that our salaried employees would provide us, on average, 40 hours a week. That's what this contract says. But we all know that we work more than that, and that it's not done with comp time or unemployment compensation or anything else. It's just that, you know, you're expected to provide the town no less than 40 hours of service a week.
Well, it does say in the contract, employee may be required to work longer than a 40-hour week without additional overtime compensation. So it is specific in the contract. Okay, so that's done. My next question is on, normally in this contract, we have like an appendix A, which outlines the duties and responsibilities of the position, and that was actually replaced with more or less a, an objective section, that these are the three objectives that this person will accomplish and be focused on during the one-year contract. I'm just, there's a lot of other things in appendix A for this particular position, and I'd actually like to see appendix A included in this. Because it's more or less, you know, like if you were doing a contract, it would be appendix A, and then you would give that person their annual objectives, and those three items that you have in here would be in that part of the process for performance evaluation. And you've taken out like, you've taken out the appendix A duties and responsibilities and replaced it with just the objectives.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry?
Yeah, I guess maybe I was too heavy-handed. I did want those three priorities to be the three priorities that we use to evaluate the employee. There are plenty of other duties that go along with being the planner. I would say, we can either add appendix A at this point, or we could add it at the end of one year. I'm actually just completely indifferent, because I have the same expectations, I think, that most people do, that of course he'll help us through the comprehensive planning process, and of course he'll help us with other planning issues. It's just that when it comes right down to it, the value of the position to the town, the highest value will be meeting those three objectives that I outlined.
And I agree with that, but I think as, for the sake of clarity and documentation, that the appendix A should be included in the contract.
So let's be, let's be specific and try to use an existing document so you can get to a motion, which would be the planner job description that was part of the advertisement-
Correct. Yes.
Shall be included as appendix A to this contract.
Yes.
Yep.
And-
I would like to have one time.
And my last question was, this is identified, identifying that there's a need to move funds around in order to fund the position, and this mentions that it would come out of future needs, the town council future needs account. And I see that the future needs account, that the current expense budget for, through December 31st, has the full $20,000 in future needs. Now, I'm unsure if that $20,000 is accurate, because that is also supposed to take care of increases, salary increases for multiple contracts that have come up during the period of time.
Sure.
So we've had a few, and I would have expected that $20,000 to be less than $20,000. So it might be an accounting thing with-
It might be an accounting thing. To be clear, I'm only looking for the overage, so whatever is not in the planner line, because there's still some left, would come from your future needs account, which would be significantly less than $20,000.
Correct. You're saying in here, it's balanced approximately, you need $10,465 or so, and that would, you're proposing it to come out of future needs, which is at $20,000, looking at the December expense budget report.
And as you recall, counselor, the fiscal impact statements that I've been submitting to you with each contract renewal increases, the numbers tend to be very small, because we've been at just about 2% for my assistant, we only did 1.5%. So these are very small numbers hitting the future needs account, so I think we'll have room for this. And the next year's budget, I fully budget the position so that we're not blindsided.
Obviously, it would be fully budgeted in the next budget cycle, which we're working on now.
It is in the proposal.
Yep. Over to you, Peter.
I just want to make a statement again, that this gentleman has not practiced as a municipal planner in the state of Rhode Island, which I think it's pretty important to have that experience. And even though he states that he knows some of our laws, I don't think he's, has performed as a municipal planner in the state of Rhode Island. So I am greatly concerned that, based off of what's happening with our town, with our comprehensive plan, the development of them all, that this gentleman might not be qualified to understand all our laws and function without just getting thrown into the fire and learn as he goes.
Dave, did you have any questions? No. Oh, I thought you, okay, I thought you said some. All right, if there's no further-
No, I have some questions. Sitting here very quietly. Thanks for coming. I am not wearing purple, sorry. Thanks for coming, Mr. Rousseau.
You're welcome.
Is it Rousseau?
Rousseau.
Rousseau. I have a couple of quick questions. Do you, I know you're AICP certified, do you hold any other professional designations or licenses?
Real estate broker in Massachusetts, no Republic, those two others.
Have you been active as a broker recently?
No, I have not.
But you've kept the license.
Inactive brokerage, kept the license.
Good. Maybe you could just talk a little bit, I noticed you referenced the, I don't know if it was the creation or the administration of the Affordable Housing Trust, and I think, was it Easton?
Easton, Mass.
Because, let me just give you a little primer on why I'm asking that question. In Rhode Island, most recently, we've had some changes in legislation that creates, or it allows the towns to directly benefit from those affordable housing dollars. And only in the event that you have some mechanism in which to spend those dollars, and I think it's, somebody can correct me, it's two years, if you don't spend it within two years, you have to turn it back into the state. We've never had a mechanism in which to capitalize on that, and we currently don't, and that sort of just rang a bell that you had some experience in the trust.
Well, we're all started in Massachusetts with the Community Preservation Act in 2001, and where 10% of the proceeds go into that account would be for affordable housing. But that wasn't enough to do some of the projects we wanted to get going in the community. So there was also money that could be appropriated, town meaning to go specifically into that affordable housing account. If we set the Affordable Housing Trust, allowed under the law, so we built up a kitty to do more projects and use it as leverage, and send it to the local match for state and federal dollars. So, came from the CPA, we got into it 2001, a lot of money was put in from the state, 100% match, it was a search charge against the real estate, and built up to quite a bit, and did, in the years I was there, a small amount of affordable housing units, about 26, 28 units were done through that trust.
So, but I guess, long story short, is you have experience in administering that sort of program.
Yeah, Community Preservation Act.
Which is good.
Yeah, and Affordable Housing Trust, and HUD monies, I've used Commonwealth block grant monies before with City of New Bedford and affordable housing, and we set up corporations, nonprofit corporations also, using federal dollars, state dollars.
Good. I think it's interesting, the three communities that you have the most experience in, whether Norton, New Bedford, and Easton, they sort of all have their own unique similarities to Tiberton. I think, I mean, you've got the experience of New Bedford of being a former industrial hub. You've got Easton, which is adjacent to a former industrial hub of Brockton. That, I think, is interesting to us, because Tiberton is so close to Fall River. And while the dynamic is twofold, because we're in Rhode Island with a different tax structure than Massachusetts has, we also have, for lack of a better term, a municipality just to the north that's ready to eat our lunch just about any time they can. So it takes a little bit more creativity and planning, for lack of a better, to figure out what we're doing here.
Also, if I could just mention, too, I mean, I have affinity towards coastal agricultural communities, such as this community. While I was born and raised in New Bedford, spent a lot of my volunteer and private time in Dartmouth and Westport, working with land trusts, agricultural trusts, watershed groups, just protect the environment and promote smart growth, respecting the environment. See a lot of things, a lot of similarities here, using coastal resources. Done a lot as a harbor master plan, director, five years of behaving in New Bedford, used a lot of state-informed monies, seaport monies to enhance the coastal resources. So there's all the similarities, experiences I bring, with 25 years of experience in planning, economic development, affordable housing. And also, going back to the question over here about ability, it is a fact, I have not been a planner in Rhode Island, but I have tremendous amount of resources and colleagues in Rhode Island that are working communities. I can just pick up the phone and I, there's all kinds of things I can use as resources at different state levels, also have colleagues in those positions. So I feel very confident I can do an excellent job in this community, although I'm applied.
And, you know, this may be just anecdotal observation, you say that you've had a long career in planning, and it's been in preliminarily, primarily, preliminary, primarily three communities, which in a lot of, a lot of times, you, we interview people, or we look at resumes, or in my professional life, I see people who, they've done a year and a half over here, and two years over there, and six months over here, and eight months over there, and they bounce around all over the place, and that really drives me crazy. But I like that you've got a long-term connection with the communities that you're working in. And I mean, it's nice to hear that you're a New Bedford native. You certainly seem to have an affinity for the city, and, you know, a great respect for it. And these other communities, let me say, it was six years in New Bedford, 11 years in Easton, I mean, this is, I'm, that makes me a lot more confident in your interest in being here for a long term. I don't know if I have any other questions, but I'm, I very much look forward to working with you.
Thank you. And just to your point, it is a commitment. I mean, talking about over 40 hours a week or whatever, it's really a commitment, a lifestyle commitment to getting engagement with the community, and dedicating your services and your time to do some good. That's why you get into the public sector, to do some good. And that's why I stayed in Easton so many years, there's just so many wonderful relationships and so much was accomplished. It takes time to get things accomplished, building trust and respect within the processes. Things are complicated and they take time. So you make that commitment to make the change, and that's why you stay.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? I'd like to entertain a motion at this time.
Well, I would move, I would move to approve the appointment of the town planner, Mark R. Rousseau, and the employee contract with the amendment to add appendix A, the advertised job description for the town planner.
Andy.
And we're going to have to make changes to the contract to reflect the date.
May I just suggest that you do it as two separate motions, since it's two separate charter provisions that deal with appointment in the contract?
So, appointment-
One motion for appointment.
Okay, so I will rescind that, and I will say, I will request, make the motion to approve-
Yes.
The appointment of the town, of a town planner, of Mark Rousseau, AICP.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion remains second. Are those in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion.
Just, I just want to make one comment. I would be voting no at this point for the appointment of a town planner. And nothing against you, Mark, I actually, you have an exemplary resume, and that's not the reason why I would- Actually, you have an exemplary resume, and that's not the reason why I would, would be voting against this. Because if it was next year, I'd say yes. It's in the budget and it's fully funded. And so my only reason at this point is the, my budget concerns in taking out money out of the future needs account out of the budget. So that's, that's my only reason for not voting for this position.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just very quickly, if I could, just, I agree with Ms. Cabot saying, unfortunately, we didn't have a line item in our budget that carried enough money. But on the other hand, if we are going to have a planner, and I'm assuming it's going to be in the budget, and I'm assuming it's going to pass, then we would want him to be on and trained so that he can take over, is it five months from now, this is the new fiscal year? So I think I just fell off the fence and I think that people are gonna, are gonna probably vote to have a planner. My only request would be that this man is given the time to get up to speed and that we don't pile a bunch of stuff on him right off so that he can get the homework done and get around and meet the people and get involved. And I'm sure Ms. Kate will, you know, be a great resource to you, and she's a good, good person, she'll work with you, I don't think there'll be any resentment. So I think, with that said, I'll be ready for the vote.
The only comment I would add is that I don't know why this evening becomes an issue as to whether it'll be included as a line item in the budget or whether it wouldn't fact pass. That's done on a year-by-year basis. We have no way of knowing one year from another whether or not there's going to be sufficient funding for a town planner or just about any other office in this town. I'm going to make my, my decision as to whether or not we need a town planner today, based on the facts that I have today. I'm not going to make any assumptions as to what the Budget Committee is going to do. I can't do that.
That's the purpose of the town, basically.
Well, that's, that's the second point that you may notice.
And what was told in a line item in the budget.
I can't make a decision today as to whether or not we need a town planner and who should be the town planner based on an election or an FTR vote to be made months from now. And whether, and we'll have that vote only if the Budget Committee includes this as a line item in their proposed budget. Why would I make those assumptions? That's not the decision for me to make tonight. The decision is, one, do we need a town planner? And two, is this gentleman qualified to be the town planner? After that, it's a question of our town administrator coming up with the financing and the funding. We have to vote.
Motion remains second. Are those in favor?
Five opposed. Two.
I move that we approve the contract for employment for the town planner. We're going to include the edit of Appendix A to reflect the advertised job description. And we're also going to make amendments to the term commencing presumably, when will Mr. Rousseau start?
He's prepared to start immediately.
So, and we're going to change this, if we want to change it, we'll put a date certain or leave it up to.
Today is the.
Ninth.
Ninth.
February.
Again, I'm indifferent, this is a bookkeeping matter, and I don't do bookkeeping, I ask other people to do it and they do it. So I would say, 10th through 11th, it's up to you, Mark. How good are your snow tires?
Very excellent.
He's here tonight.
He wore loafers, that's pretty good. He was expecting to start just before February 1st so that we would, because the benefit moment question for us, it's just a lot easier to administer. We're close enough to the first, we can probably accomplish that. Retroactively, there's nothing against the rules for us to do that. So I would say, I'm going to leave it up to Mark, but it's the 10th or the 11th. Given the lateness of the hour, you might want to sleep in tomorrow. Or shovel. I'm going to leave it up to you.
November 1st, we're going to be the 11th, Nancy, and then everything else will follow.
Everything else will follow.
I think that's it. That's all the amendments we made, I think.
Some motions been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion remains second. Are those in favor? Opposed. Five two.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Does anyone know how the roads are? Keep going. Keep walking. Keep walking. Town administrator requests extension of resolution establishing Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee.
Madam Chair, I think this would be easy and just a routine matter. This commission, this group hasn't finished its work yet. It needs to finish, and it needs to have proper authorization through the resolution of the council. I don't know why anybody would object, maybe there's somebody out there who wants to, but unless somebody raises their voice, to me, this is just a ministerial housekeeping issue. So they continue their work with proper funding.
Yeah, just a formality, just so they can continue.
I move that we revise the resolution establishing the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee as attached in G4 to include a sunset of January 1st, 2016.
Second. Motion remains second. Are those in favor? There goes my thing. Counselor Susan, would you agree to continue this or?
I'll be so quick that by the time you vote on it, I'll almost be done.
Okay.
Sent you out a copy of this. This is basically what I'm proposing. I'd like you all to just consider it. My idea would be that if it is a majority of the council agrees that it's a good idea that we would present this to the committee that we just extended Comprehensive Plan for their review. My only purpose is, when I move along these roads that I propose, I mean, this starts down here, it's an auto body shop fills propane, I mean, there's all businesses along these roads that are in residential areas. If we went with the type of zoning that's proposed, then we wouldn't create more nonconforming uses, we would eliminate them. And the businesses that are there would be legitimate businesses, would have the right to expand and fix their buildings and do the things that, you know, they need to do to create a, manage a efficient building. So alls I'll ask is that you guys review this, and I'll put it on the agenda for next meeting, and we'll talk about it some more after you have a chance to digest it.
Thanks, Joe. I would have some comments.
All right, well.
Joe, can you just explain, the only one I have a question on is this general commercial south side of road, the one in the middle that looks like it goes.
Yeah.
From Bogomash.
It's from.
It's an oddly shaped road, that's why I'm trying to.
Well, part of the road and part of it, the second line is actually the district, the zoning district, but basically.
You're saying that section of Bogomash Road?
Yeah. It would be across from First Road where you have, it would be from the end of General Auto Parts.
Yeah.
Tiverton Auto Parts, I'm sorry.
Tiverton Auto Parts.
Up to the nursery, potting shed, yeah.
On both sides, right?
No, just on the side. There are businesses. So you had the two junk yards, the Star Riders building, then the potting shed, I think it's called, a.
Potter shed.
Yeah.
So there are businesses in here. And I've been speaking with some of the neighbors along there, and they seem to wonder why some of the places look so bad, and didn't really understand zoning anyway. But, but my brothers kind of, it's kind of happened to me walking, but I'm going out and trying to hit the neighbors in these properties, residential people, to see how they feel about the change.
Yeah, and since Brett brought it up, my only comment is, with that general commercial, you didn't include Sturdy Boat, which is farther up on Bogomash.
I, you know, I tried to limit, I don't know how far I could stretch it out before I encompassed the two million houses, so, I mean, if you feel they should be in there, this is just the first draft, so. All right, so I'll ask it, it can be on the next meeting's agenda for the discussion.
Nancy, can you do that, can you put a use table on here? And, use table would be fine.
Yeah, they're covered.
Well, well, the under the new codes with this neighborhood commercial.
I'd like to know what the uses would be, neighborhood commercial, general commercial, and waterfront commercial, so I can kind of, I don't remember them in by.
Actually, we don't have an updated code, do we, for the form-based code changes that went in?
It's not codified, but we have.
I mean, you've got the document.
Yeah.
From the presentation, okay.
From the adoption by the council.
It's just not.
It's just not online yet, but we have it. Now, you want me to give, for the next meeting, you're asking for this map to go back and a copy of the use table.
That would be helpful, I can get my own copy.
Yes, please. Can you just get, I noticed Mr. Susan's map had some red writing on it as well, which wasn't in the earlier draft that was on the clipboard.
Oh, yeah.
We put this in our mailbox Saturday night.
Yes, I think we do, that's on.
This was in our.
Put it directly.
Yeah, I put it in our mailbox on Saturday.
The name for it was in court, so I figured I'd be the main one.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that?
I don't think so, because we.
Continued.
Yeah, we'll just.
The next meeting?
We discussed it, and we'll just put it back on the next meeting. Not really continue it for the discussion. Councilman, hello? Discussion on Legal Services RFP.
Just wanted to make a note that when these RFP went out, some of the attorneys were very concerned about the liability. So Mr. Oberg, what is the state statute for the requested or required liability for these positions? There is a state statute.
Is there?
Because from what I understand, what's the liability, most of the attorneys that I got feedback from stated that $3 million was a rather hefty piece, so I just wanted to understand whether they got the $3 million. Because most of them have said that they had a $1 million liability, and they could push it up to $2 million. And I understand that even Attorney Vicario didn't have the coverage that you were requesting. Sure, and he gave me that feedback directly. And not to be overly cavalier, but my response to that was, crime your river. I carry a $2 million policy on my legal team, for God's sake. We made a reward where these things are expensive, and in reviewing all of the texts and the things that go on, I didn't take $3 million to protect the town, and we are involved in so much litigation, I really didn't think it was overly much to ask. And I think the proof is in the pudding, we've had 14 firms apply. And you're aware that some of them didn't have the $3 million and then did. Yeah, in other words, I don't want to, I understand, I'm just letting you know that not $3 million brings a lot of concerns with some of these attorneys.
Is that $3 million in the aggregate or?
Yeah.
So it's one, for instance, three in the aggregate, or do they?
Well, I have to be real specific, you said $3 million.
Can I ask what we're calling?
Andy, what did you think?
Our firm happens to have $5 million and has for several years. But does Attorney Vicario's firm have that? I think he has one.
I operate a two-man consulting firm, and we have $2 million.
$2 million is the basic today, and I think that, like I said, I'm not being facetious. Start an AA baseball club for 12 years and insure them a general liability policy for $2 million bucks, because you just, that's where we are today with the size of our roots and our practice and all the things, and it's ultimately to protect the town. By the way, you can read it if you really feel strongly about it, you can read it.
Are there different levels of risk? I mean, does zoning really require that much legal counsel? Should he really have to, should he really be required to have that much insurance? How much can go along with legal counsel? Speaking of baseball, tell me what a fastball is. Risk can go wrong if you put it in. And then you run into that situation for the Supreme Court first, wouldn't you, before we could, as Jay explained to us.
The Tiger Tree situation, we couldn't go after solicitor.
I think, Jay, the concern should be that, well, what happens after you get above the coverage, above the $1 million or the $2 million or the $3 million? Well, essentially, you become that as the taxpayers, become self-insured. So you've shifted the responsibility from the attorneys that you hire having sufficient coverage, and you've shifted the legal obligation to the town.
So you feel that three was appropriate number?
No, I think, I don't know, I truly don't know what the appropriate number is, but I mean, keep in mind that to the extent that they're not covered, I mean, you could be shifting the financial responsibility to the taxpayers. But that's, that's the purpose in having the people insure, that is, they're here to protect the town in case the town has any exposure because of their malfeasance.
Well, as we review the applications, we can decide.
Counselor, I can tell you that the majority, I believe, just from doing the little spreadsheet I set for you, are only carrying a million.
Thank you. That was my comment.
But I don't know if you prohibited anybody from applying, but.
Some of them were concerned about applying, and I told them to just feel free to apply if you feel that that was an over-requested amount of liability, and I said that the town council was going to be reviewing it. And by the way, Counselor, I gave the same feedback, which was, if you had an objection or a concern, you can still apply and bring it to the attention of the council in the process.
My request for the town administrator would be to give us an idea as to what the cost is, for a million coverage, $2 million coverage, $3 million coverage, $5 million coverage. Give us some ideas to what the cost would be to this typical small.
If you're just patient, it's in, they all have their liability insurance form, and you're going to see on most of them what the premium was for that. So if you're just patient to the workshop on it, you'll see all that.
Well, if somebody comes in and can tell me what his premium is in $1 million, what would his premium be in $5 million? I'm just, I'm a little curious to know what they would be.
Well, maybe we can request it.
I mean, if it's a finalist, you ask, and then they come back.
Maybe he knows what the $5 million is.
Well, the answer is, it's not five times one.
I know. It is an increase above it. $1 million was what everybody used to have, I think, and as Matt indicates, $1 million is no longer enough for liability in today's world. The town itself used to carry a million with the interlocal. I think it's $5 million now that the town has with the interlocal. So it's up to you. I mean, the other question is, yeah, how much damage can a lawyer do? It's not necessarily the same thing as, you know, personal injury stuff, but that's separate thing. The answer to the costing, I think it very much varies because it varies on the size of the firm, how many attorneys you have. It varies on the rating of those attorneys, whether someone's ever had a claim before or had a claim and whatnot. So I think Nancy is right, I guess, you've required everybody to give you the cover page, which will sell you premiums. So you'll actually be able to see what are the premiums that a lot of people are paying for $1 million, what are they paying for $3 million, what are they paying for $5 million? You'll see how many materials are submitted.
Yeah, I think we can determine that it's not a disqualifier in our process. It's just informational, and we can deal with it when we get to the finalist stage. That's my opinion.
I will do two things for you. I will go back into the archives, and it's a different profession, but there's errors and admissions recovery from the state against insurance policy for the board members of the Resource Recovery Corporation, and that negligence. And show you just how much we ended up making up as taxpayers. It barely covered a small fraction of what we thought the total waste there was up there. And the second thing I'll try to find for you, in the town of Cumbria in the 90s, we had an attorney working for the town fail to make an appearance with default judgment. And it was very expensive to the town. Didn't hurt the attorney to run to be Speaker of the House. But it was a lot of money to be figured if we had a taxpayer paid.
That just depends on a lot of factors. One factor for the judge is going to be important, and I'm sure that the insurance agents have asked this question, do you do any personal injury work? Your coverage would have to be higher, the premiums would be substantially higher because of the risk of missing any one of those deadlines. any one of those deadlines and releasing the course of action.
I also, there was just, just within the past couple of months in the newspaper, one of the attorneys representing the state in the 38 Studios case, settled for the limits of their liability policy. And it was clear, they had a $5 million policy. They already spent about $600,000 in defense of it. And that was why the general, somebody passed the bill to eliminate the joint sever liability. So they were able to settle and get out of it for 4.3 million or so before the rest of their $5 million was absorbed by defense stuff. So there is an example of a $5 million policy and a substantial recovery from the, by the taxpayers of the state.
Okay. We'll move on. Chief, did you ever say something?
No, I thought Mayor President asked about the traffic. The state roads include running my shoulder. Standards are hidden in the lab, there, I see. It was actually raining out now. We had a couple accidents, but all streets are not, are not on right now.
Okay.
Do you want to schedule?
I think we need to ask, yes, I think. All right, bids and requests for proposals. Do you want to handle the DPW? DPW Director Bellucci requests to want a bid for new utility truck body to a quidnick machine. The quidnick drive, $10,000, a price of $8150 for a used utility truck body. Do you want a way to speak with him?
Well, on this one, I was thinking of doing one bidder.
That's why I'm asking. I didn't have the.
And his body, looks like his body was. The quidnick is only, but we do the end-of-budget. So there's a budget of an amount of $45,000, we got.
Quidnick machine. It's just a used body. This is a used body.
A used body for $8100. On top of the chassis that was purchased for $35, so he's at $43 overall for the project. We had $45 budgeted for it, so. Since he has only one bidder, I would say let's try to go forward with it.
I did.
I move that we award the bid for a used truck body to a quidnick machine, quidnick drive, in Tiverton, for a price of $8,500.
Second. Discussion. Who's the main second? All those in favor? Opposed? DPW Director Bellucci requests to want for purchase of two roll-off containers for the landfill to East Coast RI of Johnson, at a price of $10,400 for both containers. And I think he's in.
Once again, so. You didn't compare it to his budget and figure it, but.
There's no budget, it's coming out of the.
It's restricted.
So. Which has got.
Seventy-six.
Seventy, yeah, that sounds, I was gonna say seventy-five, but yeah.
Somewhere in here.
Yep.
A lot of money.
It was a lot of money.
We shouldn't spend much of it.
Entertainer moves in.
We award the purchase of two roll-off containers for the landfill to East Coast RI of Johnson, at a price of $10,400 for both of them, to be taken out of the recycling funds restricted 2012 account.
Second.
Who's the main second? All those in favor? Opposed? Open public, sorry, Chief Blake, you request permission to advertise bids for animal shelter services.
Mayor President, this is the last year expires in June 30th. This year we're covering animal pound shelter. Requesting permission to advertise. You have the advertisement in the pound specifications before you budgeted approximately $28,000 in this year's budget. There are new owners of the pound. I don't know what the increase may or may not be for the upcoming contract. Since I've been here, since 12 years now, we've been with this, the second, has been a successful bidder. And I have spoken with the chief in Barrington, or excuse me, Berstow, the guy in the pound over there. So I wouldn't explain the areas, but the contract's about to expire, and we do need services.
Just a question, do you think three years, if you're researching other options, is three years a long period of time?
I think three years is very brief time.
I was gonna say, two years would be a good idea.
There are other options of building your own shelters as well. I mean, it's just financially that you'd have to look at a variety of options. And I've actually looked at the cost of a building, and so on and so forth. But the past, it's always been a three-year contract. It gives us a little bit, if we did want to go into that area of building, it would give us some latitude in that area as well.
Just what I'd ask.
Yes, thank you.
Do we need a motion?
We grant permission to advertise bids of the animal shelter services for the police department.
Second.
Who's the main second? All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Open public forum for announcement, comments, and questions. Mrs. Black, Project Purple.
Yes, I'd just like to thank the town council and Mrs. Pelletier on behalf of the Tiverton School Department and Rebecca Ellerman Tiverton Prevention Coalition for taking part in this, especially you, Mr. Suzy, you have a good squad. But it was really good to work with all of you. And I just wanted you to know, a speaker came to the high school and to the middle school to talk about all these issues. And I went to both sessions, and you could hear a pin drop. I've never seen them so quiet. Especially the middle school, because, you know, they're young. And he was just amazing, so that's what we did for this. So thank you so much for the Chris Herons, Project Purple.
Thank you.
Town Administrator, items and announcements?
Given the lateness of the hour and the heat of the commute, I'll be brief. I want to echo the council president's comments of gratitude to the Department of Public Works, the Tiverton Police Department, the Tiverton Fire Department, for a very aggressive attack on the storm, a tremendous amount of diligence and hard work and thoughtfulness, and just the effort itself. I think we have a lot to be proud of. Having said that, we will always have a process of an after-action report, asking ourselves questions about how can we improve our performance in the future. Bearing in mind that it was an historic storm, which should give us some historic learnings. And I think there are areas that I'm going to very proactively address, or I think we probably can do better next time we face a storm of this size, or a number of storms in immediate proximity. So, Mayor Director, DPW returns from vacation and meet together with the entire team, public safety chiefs, and Stephen, and we'll go over the entire itinerary of the storm. And review each and every decision that's been made, and look for ways to improve.
Thank you. Council announcements, comments, and questions?
Briefly. I read my paper that Florida's bond rating was in jeopardy of being negative zero. Is that what it is, Dave? Just a point that we're not the only community that seems to be having.
We're not that bad. I don't think.
I hope you don't get that, that's my one point.
Madam President, second comment. The town administrator is coming up on his one-year anniversary on 2/25/15. I just wanted to get comments, so that we can think about, if we want to do another performance review for the past six months. We'll give the six months, and then think about that, and get that on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any other councils? All right. Councillors, items and announcements?
Just a couple of things. Number one is a memorandum regarding the sidewalks on the state roads. Just provided useful information on that, that there's a certain responsibility for the town for state road sidewalks. Number two is just a copy of a memorandum set regarding the zoning board. There was a question about attendance at training sessions. And I just wanted to clarify that, so I'd sent that memo to the zoning board. It may be a misunderstanding anyway, and they're gonna be there, but. Which is a nice segue into number three, which is the rescheduling of that training session that was going to be held during storm storm number two. And in talking to the clerk, we were looking at Monday, March 2nd as the date. Now, there is a latest procedural improvements committee currently scheduled then, but we were hoping that since there are a lot fewer people that attend that, we could more easily reschedule that. Conceivably, then, depending on Council Pelletier's schedule, we might be able to do it earlier, meet at 6:00 on that, and then have the workshop at 7:00, or reschedule that to some other night. So. Regrets and indulgence, that was my suggestion.
That should not be a problem. If you want to even go earlier than that, I can probably just work from home.
So it's Monday, March 2nd?
Monday, March 2nd. That's Saturday. We'll need the town administrator to follow up on the details of whether the other committee will be meeting as well.
It's 7:00 PM Town Hall?
7:00 PM here at Town Hall. I'll be away with that.
I think you've been to a lot of these. Town clerk, items and announcements, scheduling of interviews for legal services?
Yes, I now have two new special meetings that you already approved this evening, which is on the 14th and the 17th. Those are both for budget purposes. So I'm gonna just also suggest that you might want to have Saturday, the 28th, because the budget committee is looking for your revenues, must be in by then, final revenues and final budget. So I'm just putting placeholders, if you think you're gonna need that 28th.
That's right. The 21st is not good for me, but the 28th is fine for me.
For the budget purposes.
For the budget purposes.
And then.
I was thinking of 24th on a Tuesday.
That's a planning board meeting at the high school.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And a conservation meeting. So I think you need that at least initial workshop to sort the thing with the legal services.
The council, the council really doesn't have to go to that meeting. The planning board meeting, and most of us, a lot of us have.
I'm just looking for the date.
Yeah, I guess we do.
I was just gonna say that with the most recent snow events, my time at work has been rearranged, and. A one or two-man office does not have the luxury of delegation, so I have to make up the week that I was buried under a few snow. So I've been kind of tight lately, and I apologize for working on my phone while we've been having this meeting, but any.
Do you want to add it? Maybe your Saturday meeting after the budget?
I'm sensitive to how much stuff is going on all at the same time, and I'm not sure how diligent I can be to attending to all of it.
We could always add it, but I was hoping to really dedicate some, just that time to it. Because we have to go through all 14 applications.
I mean, if you want to break this down into digestible pieces, I think that.
Well, all the thing is, during the personal process, you go through every application, you number them 1 to 14, and then you decide the top seven. Like, we're not going to interview the 14. We're gonna look and check off, some of the applications, we might not like them at all as a group. So I was thinking, like, the planning board process, where they went through every application, remember the month of 14, and then just interview the top seven, or whatever.
So how about the holiday, the 16th?
That's okay with me.
That's, I mean.
It's next Monday.
Oh, next Monday. What holiday is that?
It's for the President's Day.
It's not a holiday for me.
Actually, I've got the open space meeting that day anyway, but you can meet at the Senior Center.
Well, we could always just meet in this, in Matt?
You're gonna have a big amount of documents.
I was thinking Matt's, this is an executive session meeting. Well, it is an executive session meeting.
Well, if you think you can spread everything out on Matt's.
Well, we could do it at the Senior Center, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, but I just need the date. So you think on Monday is a holiday?
Keep in mind.
You live in.
Yeah, then we'll have a meeting on the 14th, the 16th, and the 17th. Which is fine, but I just want to be.
So we're canceling the 17th.
The 17th, we're gonna do a budget. Change that to a budget.
So the 14th, 16th, 17th, the 28th.
The 28th.
That's correct.
The 28th of February, right?
Yep.
It's only because we have so many things.
I mean, that's fine, you can make those arrangements.
Suggestions, if I could. That we consider breaking up into committees, and perhaps some of us tackle the budget, and some of us tackle the.
No, we have to do it as a whole, we have to do it as a seven. Because we have to vote at these things.
Well, we have to vote, but I'm talking, perhaps do some of the preliminary.
I don't like to be at all of them, but that's just my opinion. It's the decisions we have to make, so.
The only thought was that we have some people that, I think, like these three, I mean, are very concerned, Jay especially, as far as looking at the applications. You're not really looking at these applications for lawyers, I'm not gonna know what I'm looking at.
Well, you didn't have to come to the meeting, but.
I just thought maybe if we could break up into, break this stuff into a little bit, into subcommittees, and then come back with recommendations to try to speed it along, instead of always having to make every meeting one office possible, that was just a suggestion.
I honestly think that would take longer. Because we're gonna do the committee meeting, and then have a full review at the next step.
Right, he's right.
And I'm saying that those three days are fine, if you want to do it. I would do my level best, but it may just happen.
Those three days are all right for you guys, I mean. And then we give them all the, maybe, well, at least we'd get a lot of it done in those three days.
From the 14th.
It'd be the 14th, the 16th, and the 17th. And the 16th, we'll be at the Senior Center. We can get that opened on the 16th, on President's Day.
Unless the open space doesn't meet on that day, but I have them pinned in, I'll have to check.
We'll check, and then place to be announced in municipal email and post.
And then the 28th.
I don't know what we're doing.
Final budget.
All right, and then the 28th. Another Saturday, I'm gonna, we're gonna get sick of each other. At 9:00. We're not already.
If you don't meet that one, you haven't voted your final revenue.
Jay, you're retired.
By March 4th.
By March 4th, yeah.
Just the following Wednesday, you don't meet on that Monday. So we have to, we have to.
It is unlikely that I can make the 28th or the 21st, either of those Saturdays. That week I have to be in the city pretty much full-time.
All right. Maybe we could keep you up to be, that's all.
I could put the revenues on the 17th. And I just have one other. I have one other issue. Someone left a set of glasses in a black glass case. In my office, I don't know who it was. But I just wanted to know what you're looking for.
I don't know.
I lost a pair of glasses somewhere, but I didn't lose a case, so. I have no idea. I've checked the glasses, but not the case.
All right. We're gonna move on to executive.
Oh, I'm, oh, okay.
Right?
Okay, I knew if we go into closed, to regular session, speaking to Rhode Island General Law, Section 4546585, disposition of real property, very industrial park proposal.
Second. All those in favor?
I'm the only one we're doing.
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, 4246582, way potential litigation zoning board.
All those in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Then stay, and stay in executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Section 4246582, way to litigation, site ready, LAR Construction Inc.
Second. All those in favor?
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, 4246582, way litigation, town of Tiverton versus James and Melissa Pelletier.
Second. All those in favor?[1791.12]
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, 42, 46, 5, 82, way potential litigation streets.
Second. Others in favor?
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, section 42, 46, 5, 82, way litigation, Bourne Mills rental, nine LLC versus Tivonan tax appeal.
Others in favor? Second, and I don't need a recusal form. Thank you.
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, section 42, 46, 5, 82, way collective bargaining, IAFF and IBP.
Second.
Others in favor? We're now in executive session after a very small five minutes.